Okay, Madam Clerk. We're going to call this meeting to order of the Sacramento City Council on August 8, 2023. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie will be absent this evening. Councilmember Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Protem Vang.
I'm here.
And Vice Mayor, excuse me, the mayor will be absent this evening. Vice Mayor Guerra.
Presente. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Jennings, could you lead us in the land acknowledgement and pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. Would you please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nesean people, the Southern Mido, valley and plains, Miwok, Patnem-Witnam peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still reside beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contribution, and lies. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming today. We're going to go ahead and begin with our business of the day, but before we do, we have a couple special presentations. We'll begin by our council member from District 3 here, Councilmember Talamontes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I am here to recognize Mr. Joe Ortiz on his 100th birthday, who's a World War II veteran. So, in 1943, Joe Ortiz served in the United States Armed Forces, demonstrating exceptional patriotism and rising through the ranks to technician, 5th grade. His dedication continued through the U.S. Army, National Guard, and beyond, retiring as a sergeant, 1st class, in 1974. He even altered his orders during the Vietnam War to serve in regions to help protect his son and his family. He is a regular at Stanford Settlement with Julie and the team. He's a neighbor. He's very passionate about Northgate, about Sacramento, and about issues in the Sacramento region. I often stop by his house and I ask him how we're doing in Sacramento. And Joe will share his thoughts and his opinions, and it's an honor just to have you as a neighbor and to have you as a cared community member. And just happy birthday to you and to your family.
And Joe, Councilmember Valenzuela, who you asked me about, has a few words for you, too.
Hi, Joe. It's such a pleasure to see you again. I laugh because every time I see you, you have lots of advice and thoughts and opinions, still at 100 years old. Always lots of ideas for things we need to work on as a council and knew the mayor back when he was knocking doors for other candidates before he was a council member. So, it's just such a pleasure to see you still so active in the community. You're such a gift to our entire city, not just District 3, and it's just such an honor. I got to see you recently at an event at the National Cemetery here. My father is at the National Cemetery in Bakersfield, so I go to events up here as often as I can. And it was just such a pleasure to see you there, front row, honoring the other veterans who you've lost and keeping their memories alive, and really, again, giving me advice on what to do with the city, which I always appreciate. But just want to thank you for your spirit and your tenacity, which is still just as strong now as it probably was when you were a young person before I knew you. So, thank you, Joe, for blessing us with your presence today and your ongoing activism.
And Joe, Councilmember Valenzuela and I talk about you often.
We do.
And you're loved and cared for, so if you would like to say a few words, you're welcome to the dais.
We have a...
Can I come up to the microphone?
We have a...
Staff, can you give him a handheld microphone, please?
Now, we...
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
No, he walks around the neighborhood.
Yeah, he's...
Perfect.
One of the biggest things is that this whole city is not pulling, working together. We're pulling each other apart. We're tearing each other apart. On top of that, we have too many issues: homeless, hungry, poor. And we have to start doing something in regards to the ones that are... We're going to be losing more for the heat and more... I have ideas. I do think about every day what I can do for, do better, getting the work, people to work, and hopefully that soon I will start a program myself. And we have to get those 10 little wagons that the mayor has in stores to actually sort out, make people for the homeless to get them in there, because we are going to have a lot of people dying in the street.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much. We're actually, we have to start working together, all of us. And we have people running for all the people in office. If the councilman doesn't do what you want, fire him.
Well, thank you. While, while Karin, while Councilmember Talamontes comes down to present the resolution for Sergeant 1st Class, please, let's all welcome him on behalf of Sacramento. Welcome home and thank you for your service. Everyone, please give a round of applause to Sergeant 1st Class Joe Ortiz. Thank you very much. We want to thank him for his service to not only our country, but our consistent community. We've seen that with our veterans here today. Our second presentation here, on special presentation, a recognition of the Mexican Consul General presented by Councilmember Valenzuela. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, and I will be definitely doing this with my colleagues, Vice Mayor Guerra and Councilmember Talamontes. And on behalf of the mayor, who was really sorry not to be here tonight, Consul General to honor you himself, but a little bit of background on our beloved Liliana, who is getting ready to leave us for Thailand. She began her service for Mexico in 1992, when she became a career foreign service officer. She came to Sacramento in 2017 after appointments in Washington, D.C. and Paris, and has truly been a force for good in our community for these last six years. And a very important point to Councilmember Talamontes and myself, she's a UC Davis alumni. Go Aggies! No stingers on this one. Oh, and Councilmember Maple, no stingers on this one, Vice Mayor. She's ours. I just want to say, the Consul General, someone who really considers myself as someone who followed in my father's footsteps, I really just appreciate that you really followed in your father's footsteps, who was here in the 80s as the Consul General and really built upon his legacy, not just by restoring the Hidalgo best, which was a very recent and amazing achievement that your office helped facilitate, but really being there for the Mexican citizens and nationals who are here in our community in a way that I probably set a new precedent for the entire office, honestly. There's so many moments that really showed me your character, and I will say, recently, all of you will remember that a few dozen migrants were flown here by a politician who will not go named. And that was just the scurry of activity over the weekend. We were getting phone calls and texts and trying to make sure folks had a place to stay and what are they going to do? And I remember rushing through the morning to get to this press conference where we were going to update the public on what was going on. And behind this bay of cameras, I look in this church, and sitting in the back is Liliana and her staff, just quietly sitting in the back, just there to listen, to get the update, to understand what was happening, and to see how you could support. And that, to me, was another one of many, many moments where your character and your sense of service to your community really shone through. You know, you took time out of a very busy schedule, not asking to speak, not expecting the limelight, just to be there, to make sure that you were there for whatever your community might need, and to be a help and servant, which is just incredible. So, it has been an absolute pleasure to get to know you and work with you in my short time in office and to see all you've done with my colleagues over the years protecting migrants and making sure vaccines are available and so much more that I know they'll talk about. But before I pass it off to them, I did want to give, I know you know you're here for a resolution, but I wanted you to know that you are also getting a key to the city, which is a very...
Thank you.
Which is hard to keep a secret, because everyone's like, "I heard she's getting a key to the city," and I'm like, "I'm not confirming or denying." But, you know, this is not something that we give out often, but it's something that the mayor, without hesitation, when he knew that you were leaving and coming here for this recognition, wanted us to give to you on his behalf as a symbol of our gratitude as a city for all you've done for us and all we know you'll continue to do on your next adventure. So, without further ado, I want to pass it to my colleagues, Councilmember Talamontes.
Yes, Councilmember Talamontes.
Okay, this one's hard. Liliana, you're one of my favorite people in Sacramento. You're an inspiration to me. Anytime I see you, I'm like, "I want to be like her, like you," because of you and everything that you do for Sacramento and for the Latino community. Your work on COVID-19 vaccinations, COVID-19 testing, workers' rights, steps to college, Cien Amigos, Reinas Fiesta Patrias, and anything and everything that comes your way, you make it work and you figure it out with you and your team. Your optimism, your hard work ethic, dedication, humility, and just love for our community is admirable. And I'm really going to miss you, and you're so deserving of the Key to Sacramento, and I hope that someday you get to come back here and continue the work. And I just thank you for your public service and for your friendship and mentorship of me. I'm really going to miss you.
Thank you, Councilmember Talamontes. And before we generally ask our special guests to say a few words, but before we do so, a little unorthodox, but we're going to ask a community member from, that has been active with your office and the community, Jim Gonzalez, on behalf of not only Cien Amigos, the Sacramento Economic, Latino Economic Council, and every other, you know, organization that he's involved in, the list could go on, to come up and say a few words about your service to the community. Señor... Señor... Señor González.
Gracias, señor alcalde. Mr. Mayor, Karina Talamontes, Katie Valenzuela, Katie Maple, Rick Jennings, Mai Vang. It's quite a recognition to receive the Key to the City and this special resolution, but we can't, as far as speaking, for many people in the Latino community and broadly the entire community, there's a sense of gratitude today, and there's a sense of gratitude to each one of you in the council, because you understand public service. You understand the public sacrifice that families make to do public service and to have a career like that of Ambassador Liliana Ferrer. And I would not be remiss knowing that when we're talking about sacrifice, to recognize Doug Smur, the great spouse. And so, what we're talking about is not simple. It's the fact that representing Mexico, the ties between California and Sacramento and Mexico are incredible ties of history and culture and a real desire for social justice. We all know that California has 400,000 farmworkers that have, you know, suffered immensely to put food on our tables, and during COVID, we were fed by those farmworkers. And an advocate for them was, of course, Ambassador Liliana Ferrer, who made sure that during the pandemic, there was every possible services, be it with the Ventania de Salud, the health window at the consulate, continuing the tradition of steps to college to transform, you know, dreamers getting an opportunity for higher education. And her meeting with two governors in this work, members of the leadership of the Assembly and the State Senate, and at the same time, you know, with each one of you, always trying to advance the cause of social justice. The consulate is not a place that just issues passports and documents. It is a center of our community. 24 counties depend on what happens at the consulate, and Liliana Ferrer has put together an amazing team that whenever a community needs help and they don't have the resources, Liliana makes sure that they do. And as Katie Valenzuela, thank you so much for sponsoring this resolution and the petition to the mayor for the Key to the City. I mean, when we talk about, you know, just putting a stamp, you know, South Side Park is such an important part in the history of our community, and now we have the statue of Miguel Hidalgo there as a testament. It took Liliana advocating for five years to get it there, but she got it done with the cooperation. And thank you, Howard Chan and the Park and Rec Department for being partners in that situation. But again, Mexico is now our number one trading partner, not for California, but for the entire United States of America. And that is in no small... These things don't happen by accident. It happens by partnerships, diplomatic partnerships, of which Liliana is a talented and skilled and compassionate leader for her country and for our communities. So, thank you very much, Council. Thank you very much, Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Guerra, and I hope I didn't miss anybody, but great love to all of you. Thank you for honoring Ambassador...
And, you know, for, I think my colleagues and señor González has, you know, said quite eloquently a number of your accomplishments. And for me personally, not only would I wish the public to know your roots, he mentioned the bust of Miguel Hidalgo in South Side Park, which your father was involved in when he was Consul General here. And I would like, you know, you, the public to know how you've had this bi-national spirit from your days as a graduate of Del Campo High School here in our own region, UC Davis, a resident of Curtis Park of Sacramento. Other Consulate Generals have chosen to live in different parts of the region, and you represent a 28-county region, but you've definitely taken on the spirit of Sacramento. And for me personally, you know, and I know your roots, you know, your grandparents' roots stem from the state of Michoacan for, you know, just like, you know, my family stems from the state of Michoacan. We're very proud Purépecá people and one that appreciate that struggle. But I wanted to thank you not only for the level of accomplishments that you've done for the community and increasing the stature and the visibility within the legislature here for the people who live in our region, but you did it in a way that had authenticity. You did it in a way that was not just a government bureaucracy here located in Sacramento. You did it in a way where you gave our own residents, our own community, pride in their history, pride in their culture, and that's not been the same for all the consulates in the past. And in fact, many of us who have Mexican oranges, have origins, have felt sometimes that our consulate was more of a government office than one that represents us. But you came on with such an organic and unique spirit, and that, I think, is what's led such a strong community support for you. So, I'm honored to be here on behalf of our colleagues, on behalf of the mayor, to recognize the Key to the City Resolution for your commitment to the people of Sacramento. Felicidades. Muchas gracias por tu servicio, Embajadora Liliana Ferrer.
Thank you so much to Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Eric Guerra, council members Katie Valenzuela, Karina Talamontes, Lisa Kaplan, Katie Maple, Mai Vang, Rick Jennings, and City Manager Howard Chan, as well as Susana Alcala, our city attorney. I am so humbled, and obviously Mindy Capia as well, all of you. I'm so humbled by the kind words and the kind messages that have been said today. Sacramento is found very, very deep in my heart, so, so deep that I married Sacramento born and raised. That's how deep it is. And not only that, but it has already been shared with everyone that my father was posted here in the same position as I am now occupying same responsibilities over 40 years ago. So, the stars align, because Mexico has over 140 representations around the world. Who would have said that I would have come to occupy the same position in Sacramento only 40 years later? He's in heaven. He did not get to see me, but I know he's looking down below, smiling very happily. But he's smiling not only, I think, I hope, as a proud father, but he's smiling mostly because he has been witnessing, just like I have, the wonderful empowerment of our Latino community, thanks to the work we have all done as a team. And the consulate is honored and privileged to work with a California and a Sacramento that leads in inclusivity, as being the most liberal city in progressiveness. California has not been what it is today, always. We all know that if we study a little bit of its history. But today, California stands and shines with a brightness that is unique all over the world. So, it has been my greatest honor, my greatest privilege, to work with all of you here at the City Council, but also over there, many of my friends and my colleagues at the consulate , Uriko Garcés. I am not alone when we work very hard towards getting vaccines, getting empowerment through education, getting the bust of Miguel Hidalgo, making sure our co-nationals' rights are protected. But we work together with you to make sure that California's population, which is 40% plus Hispanic today, make sure to take advantage of this incredible potential for the future of the state. In economic development and in so many other ways, the role that each and every one of you are playing is phenomenal and extraordinary. Once again, thank you for the example that now I am to follow as to how one is to lead. I have learned so much, and again, this has been the best and the highest privilege in my career, serving here in Sacramento and the 24 counties that we represent. Thank you so much for this honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, if you would join us in the front, we'll do a quick photo.
Doug.
Yes. Yes. Oh. Yohalai. We'll send you the photos. We'll get it to you.
Fellow Sacramentans, another round of applause for all of our present special presentations
today. Okay, we will continue now with our business of the day. Madam Clerk, our first item, consent calendar.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And can I remind the members of the public who wish to address the council? You should complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. Speaker slips need to be turned into clerk prior to the beginning of each item. If you would like to speak on an agenda item when the item begins, if you're in council chambers, fill out the speaker slip. If you're in Zoom, raise your hand. After the first speaker, we will no longer accept speaker slips in chambers, and the raised hand feature in Zoom will be disabled. You will have two minutes to address the council. So that everyone has the opportunity to address the council, members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. Council rules of procedure outlining decorum expected in the chambers can be found on our website. A copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect or discourage. The presiding officer will request a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. So, Mayor, for the consent calendar, I have no speakers in chambers, and I have two in Zoom.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Here's, first, I think what we'll do is we need to move item 18. Can I get a motion to continue?
No.
It's been properly moved by Councilmember Valenzuela, seconded by Councilmember Maple. There's any other comments? None on the consent calendar, none on the continuance? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, measure passes. Item 18 is continued. For those that are here for item 18, this will be rescheduled on our, on our future agendas. On the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and go with the, those signed up to speak.
Thank you. The first one is Call In User 1. If you'll unmute.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert Davis, and I'm calling about number 15. It talks about the Del Paso Heights Library roof, re-roofing. And I hope that that is confirmed and funded, because that needs to happen. And I, as I studied it, it sounded like, I'm not certain when that'll be. I'll have to go back and study it. But I rarely give kudos to the city manager's office, rarely. But this one might be earned, because if they do what it says there, then they deserve credit for it. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Alexander S. Please proceed.
Yeah, I was calling about item 5, the Department of Labor, Early Childhood Education, Apprenticeship, and Workforce Training Program grant. I oppose that. Government involvement in schools has been a disaster. Our public schools and colleges are producing citizens who have critical thinking skills and who throw temper tantrums when their indoctrination is challenged. A few products of these schools have been attending these city council meetings, maybe here today, and included in the ranks of the mayor and a few members of the city.
Vice Mayor, Government Code Sections 549543 provides that members of the public may address the city council on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body, and the speaker's comments are not under the jurisdiction of the city nor are the comments specific to this agenda item.
Madam Clerk, speaker speak to the item. If not, we will end your comments. Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have no more speakers.
Thank you very much. Okay, I've got council members signed up to speak here. Councilmember, we'll start off with Mayor Protem Vang.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to comment on item 4 regarding the allocation of a Green Means Go grant. I just want to take this moment to say thank you to our incredible city staff and staff RT for working together on this grant for the Meterview Light Rail Station. This allocation would streamline the Meterview RT Station project by making sure that it's sac...
Thank you. The first one is Call In User 1. If you'll unmute.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert Davis, and I'm calling about number 15. It talks about the Del Paso Heights Library roof, re-roofing. And I hope that that is confirmed and funded because that needs to happen. And I, as I studied it, it sounded like, I'm not certain when that'll be. I'll have to go back and study it. But I rarely give kudos to the city manager's office, rarely. But this one might be earned because if they do what it says there, then they deserve credit for it. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Alexander S. Please proceed.
Yeah, I was calling about item five, the Department of Labor Early Childhood Education Apprenticeship and Workforce Training Program grant. I oppose that. Government involvement in schools has been a disaster. Our public schools and colleges are producing citizens who have critical thinking skills and who throw temper tantrums when their indoctrination is challenged. A few products of these schools have been attending these city council meetings may be here tonight. And included in the rank of the mayor--
Vice Mayor, government code sections 549543 provides that members of the public may address the city council on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of a legislative body. And the speaker's comments are not under the jurisdiction of the city nor of the comments specific to this agenda item?
Madam Clerk, Speaker speak to the item. If not, we will end your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. I have no more speakers.
Thank you very much. Okay, I've got council members signed up to speak here. Councilmember, we'll start off with Mayor Pro Tem Bang.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to comment on item four regarding the allocation of a Green Means Go grant. I just want to take this moment to say thank you to our incredible city staff and STAF RT for working together on this grant for the Medeview Light Rail Station. This allocation would streamline the Medeview RT Station project by making sure that SAC RT is the implementing agency. And so, again, I just really wanted to give kudos to our planning staff and RT for working on this $300,000 grant, and really looking forward to working with staff to see the implementation of this project.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bang. And I do also want to thank the wonderful SACOG staff out there who made this opportunity possible. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor Geta. I just want to thank our U.S. Senator Alex Padilla, who actually on item five helped bring this idea to the city so that we know during the pandemic, our early childhood education workforce was severely decimated. And we still need to build space as I still had a child in childcare when COVID hit. I know what it's like when you all of a sudden have your care taken from you and you still need to work. So, being able to expand that and the grant and work on that is definitely something to cheer. And then, on behalf of my colleague who's not here and I, Councilmember Lolo, we really want to thank the city for the consent item eight, which is Robla's Start the After School funding. That is such an important, when we talk about equity, this is where equity comes from because childcare is so darn expensive. And having quality after school programs that parents don't have to worry about where their kids are and takes care of them is something that we need more of. And I just want to thank the city for the partnership on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. I want to thank, you know, Janine Cooper from our city staff on item five as well. Yes, thank you, U.S. Senator Padilla for their advocacy. But large credit goes to our city-county childcare task force and our city staff that have made this happen with our set of team as well. So, thank you for highlighting that, Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Maple?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just wanted to make a comment on item number seven. I think this is an amazing improvement to the area. It's an area that we share, the intersection on 12th Avenue and Stockton Boulevard. And just really wanted to appreciate staff for their work on this. It's a really, really dangerous corridor. I live not too far from it. I often hear from residents in my community about their fears walking across Stockton Boulevard and that particular intersection. So I think it's going to be an amazing improvement and really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Maple. Yes, I thank you to all our staff. We'll be hearing more about Stockton Boulevard in our discussion item, including traffic safety. Thank you with it. Since there are no more members signed up to speak, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Motion to remove this consent calendar?
It's been moved by Councilmember Maple, seconded by Councilmember Jennings. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, measure passes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Your next item is item 17, which is Public Review Draft of the Sacramento 2040 General Plan.
Okay, we've got a team here. Mr. Hurdle?
All right. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council. Matt Hurdle, Principal Planner and Manager of Long Range Planning, presenting to you this evening for three reasons. Highlighting the key moves of the draft 2040 General Plan, providing counsel the summary of feedback we've received thus far, and to remind folks of the public comment period, and to encourage residents to provide input. I'll also see if I can get my PowerPoint loaded up here. Thank you so much. Wonderful. All right. So, back on April 28th, we hit a major milestone, and that was at the start of the public comment period for both the draft 2040 General Plan and the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, or the CAP for short. We're looking forward to a discussion on the CAP with you all in two weeks at the August 22nd council meeting. And so, since April 28th, we have conducted many pop-up events in the community, conducted citywide webinars, given presentations to a variety of stakeholder groups, and we've also presented and obtained input from various city commissions. So, the general plan can be seen as the North Star for the city. It details how we will accommodate housing and job growth over the next 20 years. It changes city policy and directs staff to implement significant actions. Once adopted, all city actions pertaining to development will need to be consistent with the 2040 General Plan. It also sets the stage for more detailed plans that will be adopted after the 2040 General Plan, such as the Urban Forest Plan and the Sacramento Parks Plan. So, I want to spend a few minutes highlighting the key moves of the draft 2040 General Plan. A list of all significant draft policies and implementing actions are included as attachment two in the staff report. So, throughout the 2040 General Plan community outreach process, sustainability and equity emerged as the overarching themes. Sustainability and equity are the foundation of the 2040 General Plan. The Sustainability and Equity chapter provides a summary of how these themes are reflected throughout the documents, also identifies a series of indicators that can be used to monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of the general plan in fostering a sustainable and equitable city. The topic of housing is primarily covered in the city's housing element that was adopted by city council in late 2021. This eight-year housing strategy was adopted on a different timeline due to the adoption requirements set by the state. However, the draft 2040 General Plan supports the goals, policies, and actions of the housing element, most notably through the land use element. In the introduction chapter of the draft 2040 General Plan, you will find a policy index that lists all the policies and actions for a specific topic. This includes the topic of housing availability, affordability, and preservation, where you'll find 30 related policies and actions. Most notably, the general plan places an even greater emphasis on infill development, on commercial corridors and your transit. And with a move from density standards, the number of units per acre, to intensity standards, floor area ratio, we allow more flexibility and creativity by focusing on the size of the box, not the number of units within that box. It focuses on more inclusive neighborhoods and more attainable housing options by allowing and encouraging a variety of housing types. We were the first in the state to commit to this change, and we hope to be the first to also implement this change. The link between community design and public health has long been established. Poor air quality from cars and trucks emitting exhaust in facilities that emit toxic gases can lead to negative health outcomes. The general plan focuses on clean air, water, and soil, with no segment of the community disproportionately being burdened by environmental conditions. The general plan introduces a ban on new or expanded gas stations unless Level 3 electric vehicle chargers or fast chargers are installed. It expands upon the transit-oriented development ordinance by not allowing drive-throughs within a quarter mile of high-frequency transit. It builds off the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change and includes a modal hierarchy and user prioritization, focusing on prioritizing walking, biking, transit, then the car. It prioritizes investments in the underserved and environmental justice communities. It does this by increasing access to parks within a 10-minute walk of every resident. It coordinates resources and investments towards Sacramento's historically disenfranchised neighborhoods through interdepartmental neighborhood development action teamwork and supports community health and access to healthy food. We're looking at the healthy food zoning, updating the Planning and Development Code to promote and protect healthy food options. It addresses polluting and incompatible uses near homes and schools. It directs the study of an amortization ordinance that would phase out polluting industries currently located near sensitive receptors. It also directs the development of zoning standards for industrial manufacturing developments to minimize or avoid adverse effects related to air quality, noise, or safety on sensitive populations. So although the comment period is still open, the self-guided online workshop has received approximately 500 comments to date. In June, staff presented to seven city commissions, and a summary of these comments from the commissioners can be found in attachment three of the staff report. So, there have been 500 comments to date, but four themes have begun to emerge in terms of the input we've received. There's asked for the increase of the city's tree canopy in urban forest, especially in the underserved environmental justice communities. Asked for eliminate parking minimums and instituting parking maximums along transit corridors. There's general support for a great array of housing types and missing middle housing. However, there is interest in allowing a greater maximum development intensity or floor area ratio in neighborhoods near light rail stations and high-frequency bus service. And comments have also been received to ensure there is room to increase the tree canopy in residential neighborhoods, and the infill in neighborhoods should be at a neighborhood scale. Infill developers have also requested for the 2040 General Plan to maintain the 2035 General Plan's policy that allows for projects to exceed the maximum floor area ratio if the project provides a significant community benefit. The draft 2040 General Plan instead includes more permissive floor area ratios and would require the provision of affordable housing for the state's density bonus to exceed the floor area ratio. So after tonight's discussion, we have five pop-up community events remaining this month. We'll also be back to council in two weeks, as I mentioned, on the draft CAP. And we are encouraging folks to provide comments on the draft documents by August 23rd, so we have ample time to consider the comments for potential revisions. We will be releasing the draft Master Environmental Impact Report on August 24th for a 45-day public comment period. This has been prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act to evaluate any potential environmental impacts of the policies implementing actions and measures of the draft 2040 General Plan and CAP. And then, the comment periods will officially close on October 10th. All comments will be reviewed and revisions to the documents will be recommended. We will then return for adoption hearings with an anticipated adoption date of late February 2024. So as a reminder, folks can submit comments through the self-guided online workshop at SAC2040GPU.org or by email at SAC2040GPU@citsacramento.org. That concludes my remarks. We're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurdle. I appreciate your, you and your team's effort to provide multiple options for public comment. And as this item's a review and comment for tonight, we're going to begin with our comment period here in the public hearing process. Madam Clerk, do we have members of the public signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I have so far 30 speakers on this item. So I have 22 in chambers. The first is Dan Allison, Ben Raidersdorf, Lisa Prey. And feel free to line up. As I said, we have quite a few of you. Mr. Allison?
Good evening, council members. Dan Allison, District 4. I want to speak specifically about parking in the general plan. The city council's direction to staff in January of 2001 was eliminate parking minimums citywide, period. Staff has backed off from that. The general plan now says program components could include eliminating city mandated parking requirements. And I've been to a number of staff presentations on the general plan and asked why they backed off from that strict requirement. And basically, the answer was neighborhood associations. So I would like to state that neighborhood associations are not a good representation of the citizens of the city of Sacramento. If we don't get parking right, a lot of the general plan will fail. I was walking on a very hot day recently, and every time I crossed a street, I thought, why is it 20 degrees hotter crossing the street than on the street with tree shade? The reason is too much pavement, too much parking. We're not a city of trees. We're a city of pavement. And unless we get parking right, we will continue to be a city of pavement. I would like to see that mandate to eliminate parking mandates citywide go back into the general plan and be stated strongly. I realize that there's a parking management plan that is going to start and should be consistent with the general plan. And I think the good place to start that is eliminating parking mandates citywide. If it turns out that's not the right answer, we can go back and look at that again. But that is where we should start. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ben Raidersdorf, then Lisa Prey, then Emily Estes.
Thank you, council members, Mr. Vice Mayor. My name is Ben Raidersdorf. My wife and I, we own our home in Mansion Flats here in District 4. And I'm here as the Vice President of House Sacramento, which is an all-volunteer pro-housing organization. But the real reason why I'm here and why I care about housing is that in my day job, I am a voting rights and democracy advocate, which means that I get to see very up close the creeping threats of authoritarianism and political violence, especially in states like Florida, Texas, and Arizona. Why does that matter? Because every single day, over 1,000 Californians, 1,000 of my neighbors pack up and leave, largely to these states. And let me tell you, they are not moving to Texas for the robust civil liberties protections. They are moving because that is where they can afford a home. So I urge you today to really sit with, to consider, and then to act on House Sacramento's recommendations to strengthen this general plan update, and in particular, moving some of our highest opportunity, most transit-rich neighborhoods up from that floor baseline FAR 1.0, where the majority of these neighborhoods are currently proposed. Now, you know, I want to be really clear that this isn't just calling for more density for density's sake. This isn't even about bringing more people into Sacramento. This is that when we, we know from experience, when we fail to build housing in keeping with economic and population growth, we are forcing people out, out of our neighborhoods, out of our city, to distant suburbs, and then out of the state with all of the consequences that may bring for them. I mentioned being a homeowner because to me, that actually means something really important. It's that for the first time in my life, no matter what happens in this crazy country in this crazy time, I get to live in California for as long as I would like, and I can no longer be priced out. But the reality is, so many of your constituents do not get to feel that safety I feel. So I urge you, in making additions to this plan, try to keep as many people--
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Lisa Prey, then Emily Estes.
Good evening, and thank you for the time. I'm Lisa Prey. I'm the president of the North Natomas Community Coalition, and we've been spending the last couple of months reviewing the general plan update. We really support many of the goals in the plan, and we find that they're very applicable to our region of Sacramento. The first one that I want to talk about is your land use and placemaking goal 2.2, the interconnected city. One of the problems in North Natomas is that our region is divided by Interstate Highway 5. And getting across that highway requires a vehicle. It is dangerous to cross the highway on any of the interchanges on a bicycle or as a pedestrian, which some of our students have to do in order to commute to high school or other community assets like our aquatic center. So, there is in the, along-range plan for the city and the transportation priorities plan, some overpasses that are just for bicycles and for pedestrians. We encourage these to be elevated from their current lowest priority to a much higher priority looking forward in the next 17 years of the plan. Another area where we find ourselves very much in alignment with the general plan update is the development intensity relate, linked to transit. The course, North Natomas is one of the recipients of the potential future green line, the light rail route to the airport. However, the likelihood of that light rail line being implemented before 2040 is very low. We request to consider that we institute a bus service that would take that same route and service our community. I thank you so much for the time, and I wish you the best in implementing these goals.
Thank you for your comments. Emily Estes, then Jordan Grimaldi.
Hi, my name is Emily, and I am a resident of District 4 here in Sacramento. As a public health worker, I know how important housing is as a social determinant of public health. The general plan takes a lot of great steps to improve affordable housing in Sacramento, but I believe it could go further, specifically by increasing the floor area ratios to two or higher in high-opportunity areas and to four in areas around transit. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and for all of your hard work on this plan.
Thank you for your comments. Jordan Grimaldi, then Annie Keys, then Alyssa Lee.
Good afternoon, council members and staff. My name is Jordan Grimaldi, and I'm the Safe Routes to Schools Director at Civic Thread, formerly Walk Sacramento. Civic Thread is a nonprofit dedicated to advancing health equity and has been an active participant throughout the general plan process as a member of the Environmental Justice Working Group. I am here this evening to urge the city to embed strong safe routes to school policies into the draft general plan and climate action and adaptation plan as critical carbon reduction, public health, safety, and environmental justice strategies. Safe Routes to School is a national movement that aims to make it safer and easier for students to walk and bike to school through a comprehensive framework known as the six E's. Systems-level safe routes to school programs and policies across the country have a proven track record of reducing vehicle miles traveled and improving health and safety outcomes. MTC's Regional Safe Routes to School Pilot Program in the Bay Area found an average 4.8% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions per student for trips of one mile or less from school. Furthermore, the report estimated as much as 5.3 million pounds of GHG emissions from school trips alone would be reduced if all students at all nine counties participated in the program. Lack of citywide safe routes to school policies and programs, coupled with school district transportation budget cuts and roll-ups of crossing guard programs, contribute to single occupancy vehicles being the primary method of transportation for school commutes. Roadway safety also plays a critical factor. According to the city's Vision Zero School Safety Study, Sacramento had the highest number of speed-related traffic fatalities and the most collisions, resulting in fatalities or serious injuries involving pedestrians under the age of 15 of any city in California. As long as students and families feel they must risk their lives to walk and bike to school, the majority of school trips will continue to be made by car. Thank you for your consideration and for your support in creating a safer, healthier, more equitable Sacramento.
Thank you for your comments. Annie Keys, then Alyssa Lee.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council and City Staff. Annie Keys here on behalf of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, a property-based improvement district representing 66 blocks in downtown Sacramento. I'm here today to express that while we're extremely encouraged by many key items in the general plan update, we'd like to provide recommendations to complement the desire to build high-density urban infill projects downtown. We share concerns that the cap on floor area ratio, or FAR, of 15 in the central business district, coupled with limited community benefits that qualify for density bonuses to exceed this limit, hamstrings our ability to provide housing of all types in small urban lots. We should instead be incentivizing the remaining small lots in downtown to be developed to its highest intensity to create pathways for more units of housing, hotel rooms, and livability amenities, resulting in a healthier, more inclusive, and sustainable downtown. We ask that city staff be directed to broaden the scope of community benefits to allow projects to obtain a reasonable variance. Community benefits like three-bedroom units to bring more families downtown, or public art opportunities to create a more vibrant streetscape and enrich our local creative economy, or sustainable building certifications to meet urgent climate goals. As we continue to strive towards a well-balanced central neighborhood in Sacramento with diverse amenities and housing, we urge the consideration that policy efforts do not constrain the opportunity to do so. We've appreciated, appreciated the engagement from our city community development staff, and as always, Downtown Partnership stands ready to be a partner in building a brighter Sacramento. Thank you for the opportunity to comment today.
Thank you for your comments. Alyssa Lee, then Erica Butler.
Hi, good evening, City Council. My name is Alyssa Lee, and I live in District Four in Boulevard Park. I work with youth in public schools on climate, and the general plan is important to me, not only because of my passion on climate justice, but because I wouldn't be able to afford to live here doing that work if I had to own a car to do my daily life. And we need really everyone to have that freedom throughout the entire city. I'm excited about all the moves in the general plan toward density and more walkability and lessening dependency on cars, and I support all of House Sac's priorities and everyone who's commented before me. I urge you to make sure of two additional things. One, that the 2040 general plan adopt a total vehicle miles traveled reduction, not just per capita, excuse me, VMT reduction goal. And two, to make the language throughout the whole plan much, much stronger around actually achieving this VMT reduction. Right now, the mobility element and the land use and placemaking elements in the goal, in the plan both severely lack any language referencing the VMT reduction or actually taking specific steps to make that happen, and it's one of the few indicators that the plan actually names. These sections present us with multiple opportunities to achieve VMT reduction. In a plan looking toward the next 17 years, it really needs to be fully committed toward changing the urban form to be climate-forward and walkable and fiscally solvent. This includes proven methods to reduce car travel, like eliminating parking minimums, reallocating roadways to bikes and buses, and no more highway or corridor expansions. In, in 17 years, you don't want us standing in front of you when traffic and congestion have gotten so bad, when roads are falling apart, and we are past 2 degrees Celsius of warming, asking, why didn't you act sooner before it was too late? Again, I urge you to make sure the language around the VMT reduction throughout the whole plan is much stronger to make sure that SAC will be affordable and safe for residents of all ages.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Erica Butler, then Audrey Brainard.
Hi, I'm Erica Butler. I live just outside the city, but I live near it. I'm wanting, I support a lot of what Alyssa says and others. First, as a sped teacher for the Outgrow Unified School District, I know a lot of cases where parents have difficulty getting their children to school or have unstable home environments and are often having to move from place to place, and that seriously affects students' attendance, which affects their academic ability, and it also affects things like eligibility for special ed, because one could argue their poor performances because of the lack of attendance. So looking at some technical aspects, in terms of housing, the, there's, I think there's often a belief that no matter how much you increase the supply, prices will never drop. California is just an expensive place. Everybody wants to come here. But if you look at, for example, in Tokyo, according to Real Estate Japan, in 2020, for a studio apartment, it costs only about $700 a month. And that was even after the population of Tokyo had increased over the preceding 10 years. And that's because they really want to increase the supply and that they have policies that prevent the kind of zoning practices that occur in this country. Because of that, they're able to increase the supply. And because of that, I think it's really important to keep in mind that demand and supply are economic laws, and they do affect prices and things like that. In addition, when I'm walking along roads, it's often kind of scary if it's like an arterial road. I often fear that a car will veer off and hit me, or the cars really, cars are really noisy. And I think we need to not just encourage other modes, but we need to discourage driving as well, such as by restricting parking. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Audrey Brainard, then Sam Bagnert. I'm sure I'm saying that right. Following Sam is James Allison.
Councilmembers, Vice Mayor, Manager Chan, thank you for allowing me to come and speak today about this issue. In regard to the new general plan, I think it does a lot that is ambitious. There are a lot of changes that I think, as Sacramento's, we look forward to. I've grown up in Sacramento, lived in Sacramento area my whole life. My father was born in Sacramento and, and lived in Sacramento his whole life, by and large. And to me, it, it's important, as others are saying here, to see less of a focus on automobiles as something that are required to get around town. And, you know, I, I like cars. I have two of them. I like to work on them and stuff. You know, it's, it's a hobby. It's fun. But to, to be a requirement to survive in this city is, it's, it's extreme. So, yeah, my hope is to see, as others urged, the floor area ratio increase, especially near transit, and to see additionally, as I mentioned, automobiles being too much of a focus, to see that increase in housing also as it relates to the cost of housing, affordability in the city, and of course, our unhoused population that is growing and, and, you know, essentially, if people can't afford to live in a house, well, they're either going to move out of Sacramento, or they're going to move out into the streets. So I, I hope that as, you know, Sacramento government and the community of Sacramento, we can be ambitious in addressing this and, and make the, the greatest change we can for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sam Bagnert, and then James Allison.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Sam Bogwut. I'm a District Seven resident in The Pocket, and I'm a member of House Sacramento. Thank you for the opportunity to, to comment on this plan. I think that this is really a historic chance that we have to do something that our, our children can be proud of. So I'm, I'm a divorced father of one, one school-age kid and, and one, one preschooler, and my kids often ask to go to Mozak almost every weekend. And we'll often go there and talk about environmentally friendly and, and fair, and fair housing, because the exhibits just kind of, you know, invite that. So, so I think this is a, this is the, the, the chance that we have to do something that our, our children can be proud of. I want to thank the, the staff for all the, the work they did, and, and I would ask to consider the following revisions just to make, to sort of help ensure that our community's housing will be more, will, will continue to be fair and environmentally friendly, to raise the floor area ratio to, to 2.0 in, in high-opportunity areas. And generally, to, to increase that around, like, around transit areas and reduce vehicle miles traveled. I also want to say that I am personally incredibly grateful that Sacramento has, has made it possible for, for my co-parent and I, for my children's sake, for my co-parent and I to, to live close by each other. And I hope that, that any, any sort of families in, in similar situations going forward for the next, you know, 15, 20 years, will also have that, that chance. So thank, thank you, Council.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is James Allison, then Luis Romo.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. My name is James Allison with Midtown Association, Property Business Improvement District, representing over 1,200 properties in our central city. Our mission is to make Midtown the center for culture, creativity, and vibrancy in Sacramento's urban core. Within that mission is a goal to pursue the development of responsible urban infill projects that can meet the needs of our cities and districts' evolving needs. We are supportive of many of the key items within the general plan that will seek to increase density throughout the city. However, some areas within the plan will inherently create roadblocks to new and innovative projects. Specifically, we are concerned about the provisions of the land use element that will limit and slow the development of desperately needed housing. The draft GPU increases the FAR, seeking to allow greater density. However, the proposed increase is not nearly ambitious enough to meet the city's aggressive housing production goals. In fact, the proposed FAR adjustments are consistent with projects that have already been completed in Midtown, which means this new threshold will serve only to limit heights of future projects instead of opening new opportunities for increasing density in the urban core. Moreover, projects that seek to exceed their maximum allowable height are able to do so by requesting a deviation from that restriction and return for providing some significant benefit to the community. These benefits can come in a variety of forms, ranging from residential employment and job training opportunities to support for the local community programs. Under the proposed draft, deviations from FAR restrictions would only be allowable through the state density bonus with a goal of standardizing the process. What we would suggest instead of abandoning existing practice is simply to create a clearer set of guidelines for these benefits. Allowing deviations through the community benefits encourages developers to be creative in looking for ways that they can not only construct new buildings, but build them as part of their communities. We encourage you to consider increasing the maximum allowable FARs and retaining the current deviation process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Luis Romo, then Maxwell Odkins.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Jose Luis Romo. I'm a District Four resident in Marshall School and a member of House Sacramento. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the, on the 2040 general plan update, and thank you to the community development staff for all the work and engagement you guys have provided. I believe that this plan with a, with a few key revisions has the potential to make major steps to ending our community's housing shortage, desegregate our neighborhoods, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. I have a few suggestions, suggestions for policy changes to set us up to meet the noble goals outlined in the plan's narrative. Let's, let's make Sacramento greener by eliminating parking minimums and instituting parking maximums. Let's strengthen the language in the plan related to making our parking policy more bold. Let's increase the FAR to a minimum of 4.0 or more in high-opportunity areas and around all public transit stops within a 10-minute walk from it. This would help to affirmatively further fair housing while reducing vehicle miles traveled in the city. And just a reminder, increasing floor area ratios in high-opportunity areas to affirmity, to affirmatively further fair housing areas also should include areas such as, like Land Park in East Sacramento. By not increasing the FAR in, in these areas just outside of the city, such as Land Park in East Sacramento, we're providing preferential treatment and allowing the historical single-family segregation zoning to continue by not allowing more homes and job opportunities to be created in these parts of town. So let's stand up for all Sacramento, Sacramentoans and direct staff to listen to the huge majority of people so that we can rewrite the FAR rules and make a better future for our children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Maxwell Odkins, then Joey Rathwall.
Hello, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I am a resident of District Six. I live in Tahoe Park, right on the edge of Elmhurst. And I was very heartened to hear about the emphasis on increasing the density and infilling in some of our areas, particularly close to some of our public transit lines. When I get up in the morning, I walk 10 minutes to get to a light rail station and take that light rail into my public service job where I work every day, addressing the effects of climate change in the state. And I think this plan is really important for continuing to address those issues, so I thank you for your work on that. I also wanted to just say that I think it's incredibly important that, you know, I really appreciate that I have the opportunity to get in to work the way that I do in downtown from where I live, and I think it's very important that we continue to address the desperately needed housing issues in our city in a way where other people can do the same. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Joey Rathwall, then Aurora Shunman.
Hi, Council. My name is Joseph Rathwall. I'm a District Seven resident, having just moved to Curtis Park. I first moved to Sacramento in 2014, and I'm glad to be back. A parent, a member of House Sacramento, and a former climate policy professional. Thank you and your staff for all the work, and thanks, Mr. Hurdle, for the emphasis on sustainable inequity. I think there are a lot of ways to go further, but I think that's the right track. The, heard a lot of the things, I'll say them again, eliminate parking minimums, parking maximums. We need more flexible ways to increase housing. As someone who just bought a house from the same family who added a racially restrictive covenant in the 1940s, you know, directly same family who, who added that covenant, you know, it's so clear that we need ways to integrate our neighborhoods, all the neighborhoods, especially those ones that have excluded and hoarded privilege. So let's see those floor area ratios boosted, affirmatively further housing around transit. The total VMT reduction goal is such a clear no-brainer. We, we need to see, actually bring the hammer down on increased transportation emissions. I know cap comments are later, but I am a little worried about the lack of emphasis on inland flooding risk, and I would urge staff to look at the latest climate-in-force modeling of Sacramento River flows from the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan. I think those are really under, underestimated. Density is resilience. Since moving back to Sacramento, I see so much more human tragedy on the streets now. It's, you know, something that I was, I was so proud of being in, in Sacramento. It's sad to see what's happened. Let's make affordable housing, safe roads, and climate change a priority. Also, comment workshops with childcare would be great to see more often. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Aurora Shunman, then Lex Lazar.
Good evening. My name is Aurora Shuneman. I am a cyclist, a transit rider, and a renter in Council District Four. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some comments, and huge thank you to the community development staff for all of your work and engagement on this. I want to start by noting how important it is that this plan includes an environmental justice element. I believe that this draft plan has the potential to make major steps to reducing our GHG emissions, encouraging climate smart development, discouraging displacement, and above all, ending our community's dire affordable housing shortage. A couple of suggestions. First, the general plan should eliminate parking minimums and institute parking maximums citywide. I would like to see more Class One bike corridors and stronger commitments generally around bike and pedestrian access and safety. Third, I would like stronger language around commitments to total VMT reductions. And with regard to housing, I'd like to see an increase in floor area ratio to at least 2.0 in high-opportunity areas and 4.0 within a half-mile of transit to affirmatively further fair housing and decrease VMT. Thank you for your dedication to making our city more safe, inclusive, and affordable.
Thank you for your comments. Lex Lazar, then Dove Caden.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Councilmembers. My name is Lex Lazar, and I'm here speaking in regards to the general plan. Also, I kind of should get this out of the way. It is my 45th birthday today, so no need to, no need to clap. We're singing. But the reason I, I mentioned it is because I came here in 2020. I came here from where I was born, and where I was born was really bad in regards to, like, infrastructure. Like, the Santa Clara Valley is just a nasty, terrible place to live in regards to, just, you have to get a freeway to get everywhere. You're in traffic everywhere. You have to fight for housing. And Sacramento is not like that. Sacramento is great, and I bought my here, my home here in 2020. I believe that this general plan has the potential to address Sacramento's housing shortage and desegregate our neighborhoods and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. There are a few suggestions that I have, some policy changes that would be able to get us there a little quicker, maybe perhaps eliminating the parking get us there a little quicker, maybe perhaps eliminating the parking minimums, because on my block, there's a development that's being constructed that is really dense, and there's not parking that is allotted for it. Those folks will be parking on the street and/or use bike transportation. I think there might even be an electrical vehicle charging station that's going to be put there. So we need more of that, right? I drive a lot, but I really don't need the car. Eventually, I want to get rid of it and just use a lot of transit and trains and so forth. We should also increase the floor area ratio to two point oh in high opportunity areas, but also around areas where there's a lot of transit. So when there's places where we can build on on like transit parking lots, there should definitely be an ability to be a lot more dense there, we can take advantage of that land. You also have a built-in ridership, so it helps, you know, sustain that ability. Finally, just please direct the city staff to consider these revisions to the plan. That brings me to my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Dove Caden, then Vance Jared.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Dove Caden. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or SECOG. One of the primary goals that we have at SECOG is developing a long-range plan that demonstrates how the region can achieve a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from transportation. It's the largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions in the region. We know through our work that the most effective way that we can achieve that goal is through increasing the amount of multifamily housing that's in the core of the region where people tend to drive shorter distances, where they're more likely to walk, to bike, to take transit. When we fail to build enough in the city of Sacramento, that household doesn't just disappear. We know that, right? It competes with everyone else for a smaller number of homes, driving up prices, or it that demand and that construction has shifted further from jobs and services into the more sort of car-dependent parts of the region. That's all to say that the region's ability to achieve our climate goals is heavily dependent on places like the city of Sacramento to do everything that it can to facilitate new housing. So naturally, we are really excited to see the city continue to sort of work towards allowing for a greater array of housing types, facilitating transit-supportive growth along our commercial corridors. That said, we'd really encourage the city to be a little bit more ambitious in some of the high-opportunity neighborhoods and the transit-rich neighborhoods of the city. Please do take a look at SECOG's comment letter for a full list of recommendations, but the primary one that I'll just highlight tonight is to commit to at least a maximum FAR of two point oh within a half mile of high-frequency transit. These are exactly the types of places that we should be trying to to build more housing, and limiting those areas to a maximum FAR of one point oh does preclude a lot of product types that we think we desperately need. So thank you for your time and looking forward to continuing the conversation with staff.
Thank you for your comments. Vance Jared, then Michael Murby.
Good evening, council members. My name is Vance Gerard. I am an advocate for the North State Building Industry Association, representing more than five hundred member companies in the home building industry working to increase our housing supply. I also just happen to be a resident of downtown Sacramento. Tonight, I would like to offer feedback on the twenty forty general plan update concerning the use of floor-to-area ratios in the Central Business District. Under the land use placemaking item three point one, the Central Business District is subject to a capped FAR of fifteen. While the parcels in the Central Business District benefit from no height restrictions, for the smaller lots that remain for development, an FAR fifteen limits the height of a building. This is concerning when the downtown area would benefit greatly from increased housing opportunity, and the only way to increase density on a small lot is to build upward. Without reasonable methods to deviate from the FAR by providing community benefit as it currently stands, the city is not only indirectly limiting the height of potential new developments, but also the associated benefit increased housing supply would bring to the Central Business District. For that reason, we encourage the city council and city staff to consider adjusting general plan update to provide greater flexibility regarding the cap on FAR in the Central Business District. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Michael Murby, then Emily Jones.
Hey, everybody. My name is Michael Murby. I live in District Four, and I want to thank everybody for putting all the effort in for twenty forty plan. I thought the user experience online is excellent, whoever put that together. Kudos to them. I thought they did a fantastic job. In general, I just want to say that we should get out of our own way and build more housing. And I really am surprised that I I thought I'd be a member of the few, but it's very obvious that everybody here and, I think, in Sacramento wants more housing. And in general, I think we need to get out of our way for the private folks and the public folks to to build the necessary housing that that we need. And really, it's an opportunity for us as a city to become a leader, not only here in California, across the nation and the world. So why settle for average or a passing grade when we have an opportunity as a city to be excellent? Five stars. Why not go for the limit in our twenty forty plan? It really feels like we're playing it safe, we're doing things that are not going to upset other folks, when in general, we have an opportunity now to really push it. So really, what I'd love to see from the council is passion and seriousness on taking this to the next level. And I thank you for my thoughts, and in general, I echo everybody's sentiment that has spoken here before me. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Emily Jones, then Stephen Rogan.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Emily. I'm a District Four resident, a member of House Sacramento, and a housing advocate by profession. That said, I want to start by saying how grateful I am to live in a city that has taken our housing challenges seriously and to be represented by a city government that has been actively working to improve the abundance and affordability of housing in our city, which is not the reality in a lot of other places in the state, and I want to encourage you to to stay on that track. The the draft general plan update is a good step towards furthering these efforts, and I thank the staff for all their work on this. In particular, I, as a resident, am really pleased to see that both the environmental and climate impacts of our land use decisions and how we can make our neighborhoods more inclusive are priorities, because housing and land use policy is climate policy, and they are certainly crucial to achieving equity and equal opportunity in our city. With that said, I want to echo the comments of of previous members of the public that higher floor area ratios than are what are currently proposed are needed in transit quarters and in particularly in higher opportunity neighborhoods in order to make sure that the city's vision becomes a reality. FARs that are too low will continue to constrain our ability, often in sneaky ways that we don't realize upfront. It will continue to constrain our ability to build enough housing near transit and walkable areas, which are crucial to making our city sustainable into the future. And we also need to be building considerably more middle-income and middle-density housing in addition to low-income housing in our highest opportunity neighborhoods in order to ensure that those communities are inclusive and equitable and that we are working to overcome the lasting legacy of past discriminatory housing practices affirmatively and intentionally. And floor area ratios in these areas need to ambitiously reflect those goals in order for us to see that progress. So I want to urge you to accept the community's recommendation to increase FARs near transit and in high opportunity areas. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Stephen Rogan, then Connor Finney.
Hey, I'm Steve Rosen, live in or live in District Six. Sorry about the handwriting. Mr. Hurdle said that FAR regulates the size of the box, not the number of units, but if the box isn't big enough, more units won't fit in it. In the current draft, the FAR in the places with the best schools and parks, closest to jobs and with the safest streets, is too low. The people who ask for low FAR, little private clubs that claim to speak for whole neighborhoods, say that adding more homes will change the character of neighborhoods. It will, gradually and for the better. Neighborhoods will desegregate and be opened to all kinds of Sacramentoans. I hope you pick higher FAR and positive change instead of stagnation and segregation. Now, I'd like to talk a bit about corridor planning. Corridor planning is where they growth will be along corridors with frequent transit so that people don't have to drive, but the corridors where the homes will be concentrated are the most polluted part of every neighborhood. They've got the busiest streets, the fastest cars, the most polluted hair, air, unhealthy noise, even from battery cars. Right now, those corridors are one lot deep, which presses the homes against the high-speed streets. Corridors should be a half-mile wide. That is the best practice for transit-oriented development. That's the time, that's the distance it takes to have a ten-minute walk to a bus stop. So transit-oriented development, best practice, one one-half mile around the stop. So if it's corridor, one-half mile off the corridor. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Connor Finney, then Wesley Sage Walker. I have ten more speakers.
Just want to start off by thanking council and staff for taking on this issue. Change isn't easy, and if it was easy, it would have happened already. My name is Connor Finney. I'm a renter, state worker, and Sacramento resident, and I encourage you to adopt a general plan that we can be proud of by directing staff to make revisions like eliminating parking minimums citywide, increasing FAR to at least two point oh in residential neighborhoods and four point oh near transit. I've been disheartened looking for affordable housing since I moved here in twenty twenty one. You know, me and my partner are talking about what it might look like to settle down in this city, and ultimately, everything is out of our price range. I'm a state worker, they're a service worker, and it's just doesn't add up. And, you know, the the main reason that is is because we can't afford a single-family home. If there were more housing types like condos, plexes, townhouses in residential neighborhoods, these things would be more affordable to people like us. So I would just encourage council to prioritize young families and de-prioritize some loud voices in neighborhood clubs. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Wesley Sage Walker, then Kevin Dummler.
Hello, council members. Thank you so much for hearing me. My name is Wesley Sage Walker. I'm an infill developer who's worked on a few projects in the the core area. I'm here tonight about a letter that my crew and I put together regarding the community benefit clause, which I sent to all your government emails, so hopefully you got it. The reason why, in addition to my 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 team includes principals and representatives from Heller Pacific, Miriam Bartis Development, SKK Development, DNS Development, Sutter Capital, and a number of other stakeholders as well, of course, who, you know, are important. But I think the important thing here is that those people who who've signed this letter have had a really important role in shaping the core area in the last, let's say, ten, twenty years. And what this letter is really talking about is the importance of the community benefit clause. That's something that my firm has has actually used itself, and certainly a number of these other firms have. And just really here, and I hope that, you know, this letter can continue to inform a conversation, and certainly would be happy to to talk with any any of you members or your staff about why this is a really important tool and why this gives flexibility not only to project applicants but to city staff and to the priorities that you set as a city. And we feel that it's a really important element to be included in this next edition. So thank you very much for your time, and again, I hope you'll consider including the community benefit clause. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have eight speakers online. The first is Kevin Dummler.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. My name is Kevin Dummler. I'm the director of House Sacramento, and I'm also a member of District or a resident of District Four. First, I want to thank staff for all their hard work on this plan and what we have before us today. It's a very good plan, but what I want to encourage council and staff today is to be bold, and I think with a few additional adjustments, we can truly put together a great plan. So first, we've heard a lot about FAR around transit today, and I just want to reemphasize that and basically put this in perspective a little bit. What we're asking for is the ability around all of our light rail stations to be able to allow mid-rise buildings, and I think this is very much in line with our climate goals and a very reasonable request. Secondly, we've heard some requests for increasing FAR in high opportunity areas, and the reason why we're really asking for this is to increase the likelihood of infill development in these areas. These are the areas with the best schools, best parks, and we want to make sure that infill development happens citywide. Both of these changes can be accomplished through adjusting the FAR map to different ratios. I wish I could be there in person today, but I'm actually calling in because my son was just born a little over a week ago, and so this twenty forty plan, it's really taken on a new meaning for me, and twenty forty has a very different meaning as a year. And I think we can really create a city that is walkable, that's well-served by transit, that's affordable, sustainable. These are big goals, but they are achievable goals. But in in order to achieve those goals, we need to act boldly today. So I encourage you, please, make these bold revisions and make these changes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Steve. Following Steve is Susan Hare. Steve, if you'll unmute. Steve, if you'll unmute. Steve, you show is unmuted. It's your opportunity to present to the council.
Madam Clerk, move on to the next speaker.
Next speaker is Susan Hare. Susan Hare.
Madam Clerk, call the speaker and if not, move on to the next speaker.
I'm sorry. I I'm sorry. I'm here.
Please proceed, Susan.
I'm sorry for the delay. Good evening, Vice Mayor and counsel. My name is Susan Hare-Ree, president of the Environmental Council of Sacramento, Ecos. I would like to focus on how the general plan update addresses infill development in just one of its aspects, that is, infrastructure. After much study and a consensus of the jurisdictions in the SECOG region, it was determined that the major impediment to infill development is inadequate infrastructure, that's inadequate infrastructure to serve higher-density development in areas that were identified as suitable for infill, meaning with transit in centers and major corridors. Last year, the city of Sacramento proposed a number of these infrastructure upgrade projects for funding through SECOG's Green Means Go program, and twenty-five other jurisdictions in the SECOG region did so as well, and the projects were to enable infill developers to be able to tie into existing stormwater, sewer, domestic water, fire service water, and then just to get on with building their projects and not have to build any of the infrastructure themselves. This infrastructure is so important to meeting our climate goals that SECOG wrote just a week, "It is by far the most impactful transportation-related greenhouse gas reduction strategy across the whole county," that is, to invest in these infrastructure upgrades so as to unlock new housing opportunities. So the general plan update mentions this infrastructure issue but downplays it a bit. We would urge the city to single out this issue and give it the priority it deserves. It is not glamorous.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Michael Turgon. Michael, are you on mute?
Yeah, hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Michael Turgon. I am a District Five resident in Oak Park and a native Sacramentoan who hopes to buy a home someday and would like to live in an affordable, livable city. Again, yeah, thanks for the opportunity to provide comment, and I echo a ton of what other members of the public have said. It's really reassuring to see everyone turning out to support new housing in the city, and I echo their comments such as increasing FAR to two point oh in high-opportunity neighborhoods and even higher near transit, eliminating parking minimums, and committing to steep VMT reductions. I also want to urge the city to maximize mixed-use zoning and strengthen transit service so that every neighborhood has what it needs to thrive, not drive. In fact, my grandpa was born in Sacramento in nineteen twenty-six, nineteen twenty-six, and his family relied basically entirely on the streetcar system at the time to get around, which is a vision for the future I think we could return to. Many areas in the draft general plan map still remain like outside of a reasonable walking radius to grocery stores or other essential amenities. And I know we don't have a magic wand to fix that, but adopting maximally supportive land use policies would go a long way. Families shouldn't need to keep two cars and store two cars just to fulfill the daily tasks of life. Multiple transit options are essential, such as rapid bus service, expanded light rail, electric car share hubs, bike share, protected bike lanes, and safe, secure bike parking. I think bike parking is kind of an underrated roadblock to cycling adoption, as an aside. Yeah, so reimagining how people get around Sacramento is essential to both reducing VMT and air pollution, improving quality of life, and ameliorating the concerns around parking and congestion that naturally occur when we welcome new homes and residents to our neighborhoods. So thank you again for the opportunity to comment and looking forward to building a more sustainable Sacramento.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Ralph Proper. Next speaker is Ralph Proper. Ralph is on mute. Ralph Proper. Move to the next person.
I'm on mute. Okay. Yes. Yeah. This is good.
Ralph, if you'll mute the device that you're listening on. Next speaker. Luis Morante. Luis Morante.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Luis Morante. I'm a District Four resident and co-chair of House Sacramento. I'm here today to join the chorus of people who've already talked to you about increasing the FAR in high-opportunity areas, and to talk to you about some of the parking minnows. But I really want to focus my comments on ambition. I think this document is good. It shows that Sacramento deserves its place as a leader in land use politics in California, but it ultimately can be far more ambitious. Its main proposal on parking, which is to eliminate parking minimums near transit, is currently state law. So it's ultimately the minimum thing the city could do to comply with state law. And if we wanted to go further, if we want to stay at the edge and stay at the forefront, we should consider eliminating parking minnows citywide. Parking minnows can add $100,000 in cost per parking stall, especially if you're building up, and that's just not compatible with our vision for affordability, for climate in Sacramento. And so I urge you to take a closer look at that. I also urge you to take a closer look at the light rail stations, especially in East Sacramento, targeting those for FAR of four. Those are particularly appropriate places for students to live and close fraction of the Sacramento State, for people to work downtown. Those are particularly, I think, good from a planning perspective, even if the nearby neighbors would object to apartments. I have also reviewed the Coalition of Development Interest Community Benefits letter and urge you to consider their recommendations as well, and ask you to work with them. But overall, I'm happy to live in a city where so many people come out to say yes, and I hope that the document that the city ultimately agrees to at the end of the year reflects that we, as a city, can be much more ambitious because our voters want that.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Don Whitney.
Good evening. Hi. I live in District Six, and I'm speaking tonight about development in the Natomas Basin. The general plan identifies the Natomas Basin as a, quote, "study area." I read that, and I had to ask why. Because annexing land in the Natomas Basin flies right in the face of policies and goals to promote infill and multimodal transportation within city limits. And not in all way. There are thousands and thousands of acres out in the basin. It's home to wildlife, farmland, et cetera. It's not suitable for commercial development. The, I read the plan said that the city will be working with LAFCO to provide the city with greater influence. And then later on, page 126, it describes this habitat as, quote, "within the urban context." And I said, as I've said, it's not within the urban context. It's agricultural land, plain and simple. And we should be focusing on infill, parking maximums, et cetera, within city limits. We don't need to go beyond that. That's all I had. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Steve? Let's see if Steve can unmute. Vice Mayor, appears we have no more speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate all those who spoke today, both here and online. I want to thank our staff for this ambitious document. It has been many years in the works. Thank for two, now the third iteration of different councils that have been involved in it. And I think what I want to start off with is just to start to thank you for being more open to going out in different forums to the public, not just the council meetings, but going to the communities, to them, to their events, to their social gatherings, to get their input, which has led to, I think, a much fuller product. I have more comments afterwards, but let me go here to members of the council. Again, this is review and comment. We will have another opportunity to comment on this in the future. Councilmember Mayberry?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to start with that this is a really momentous occasion, and as the Vice Mayor just said, this is many years in the making, long before my tenure here, but I'm really proud to be here and to be a part of this conversation. It's also an opportunity for the community to tell us what kind of city you want to see and what we want to pass on to future residents and our children, and anyone who wants to go to Sacramento, which we hope are many people because the city is wonderful. We want to welcome people here and ask some important questions. Do we want to build dense housing in our existing urban core, or do we want to sprawl out? Do we want to continue investment into roads and car infrastructure, or do we want to be connected via public transit and bike lanes? Do we want more trees, or do we want more parking lots? I know my answers to these questions, and thanks to an untold number of hours that our wonderful staff have put into this process, including Amy Yang, Matt Erdl, Greg Sandlin, Tom Pace, we know how our community members feel, too. So this draft is a culmination of a tremendous amount of effort and does an excellent job of reflecting the updates needed to meet our climate, housing, and transportation goals. And I think that's crucial, right? Things are changing rapidly, even in the last few years, as we look at the news and we see things are moving more quickly in terms of climate change than we ever anticipated. We have to be adaptive, too, and I think that this is responsive to that. I'm also very impressed, as the Vice Mayor stated, with public outreach thus far. Grateful to the residents and the organizations that have taken the time to make their voices heard. This process is made better by all of you, and so really grateful that you're here. Not everybody wants to come to City Hall on a Tuesday, so thank you for making the time. So after hearing from a number of District Five constituents and other residents of the city, I just wanted to uplift a few of the suggested changes that I think really would just make this document just a little bit better. It's almost perfect, just a little bit better. So I fully support the changes to switching over to the floor area ratio or FAR, which replaces an antiquated system. And I really think it's imperative that we apply it consistently, right? So if we see, if we look at the map, you see, some look like Oak Park where I live, you see a 2.0 FAR, and then near transit, and yet in some other neighborhoods, you don't see that. And so I'm not picking on any neighborhoods in particular. I just, I personally would like to see that consistently applied throughout the city. We're not picking and choosing favorites. And I'd also love to see an increase from a quarter mile to half a mile. So that's a 10-minute walk. I think that that is, that makes sense. It applies to our high-frequency transit neighborhoods, and I think a uniform policy works best. I also support eliminating parking minimums, and I also appreciate the parking management strategy in the draft plan. But I personally would love to see an analysis of how this might impact the funding on the arena. I know that's a big portion of how that building is funded, and while I think it's vitally important that we have these goals around parking, we also have to assess that and how those interact. While it's often referred to as closing down streets, I believe the city should be identifying streets that we can open up to pedestrians. I think research shows that when people feel safe walking and have spaces that they can connect with others, they're much more likely to pitch in small businesses, to feel safe in their communities. And so I would really love to have the city explore more opportunities to have spaces designed for people rather than just cars. And I think that that's possible, and that's in the future. I also heard from residents that there's an interest in seeing more opportunities for traffic circles and roundabouts. These are shown to reduce speed and injuries, and I'd like to see how these can be more increasingly utilized as a part of our plan. I wanted to also uplift civic thread. Thank you for also showing up in addition to writing in. I was really compelled by your letter, related to Safe Routes to School, and once I read it, I said, "That makes a lot of sense." Yeah, you know, we're sending a lot of young people and usually in single occupancy vehicles to school. I have many of them in my neighborhood. I've got Father Keith B. Kenny and Oak Ridge and Christian Brothers, and you name it. And so I see what happens, too, when it's time to drop off and time to pick up. And that's a lot of people idling, which is terrible for air quality, and we see, we have those air quality monitors in Oak Park, so we know what the impacts of that are. And so I would love to see us look into what, you know, how we can do the Safe Routes to School, how we can invest in that, and what that might look like from a climate standpoint and a safety standpoint. And then the last note that I'll make is, I saw that there is, you know, my district shares a significant geographical boundary with the Fruit Ridge Florence Study Area, and I support looking into its annexation. I often hear from residents of that area of the county, and they are sometimes frustrated by the disparity in services by literally looking across the street of someone who's in the city, they're in the county, and they may not be experiencing the same level of service, and these are often very disadvantaged areas. So I think that that could be a benefit to our whole community in our region. So again, I just wanted to thank staff. Thank you so much for all of this work. It's really a world-class plan, and so looking forward to seeing some minor changes, but it's just about perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Mayberry. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. Just want to echo and applaud our staff and our team. You know, I came into office right in the middle of the big work starting for the general plan, and I was super excited about that, which sounds like a really nerdy thing to say, but like I was, because we're like, yes, this is such an important document. And I just really want to applaud not just the detail and the level of briefings that we're getting, but your openness to ideas. Like, I brought you this idea constituent had for what if we had like salons that were like topical, right? You could go to one on transportation, you could go to one on housing, and like just learn more about the issues. And you wrote back a couple weeks ago, and like, "Yeah, we're gonna do that." And I'm like, "Really? Because that's really cool." So I just want to continue to applaud that work and that openness, and just keep encouraging, lifting that up. Please keep doing that. And I really want to thank all of the D4 residents who came out to testify tonight, because I hope you all noticed how many D4 residents came out and talked tonight, because we hear a lot about this. Like, I knew about the community benefit clause when I ran, because I was talking about it to voters at doors. So like, we got really into the details because it really impacts us. But I also want to particularly note the number of young professionals that were speaking, because I find myself talking a lot to constituents in my district about how much has changed from the generation prior to us when they were starting their careers to now, and how, you know, that dream of, like, what we expect without of livability in our neighborhoods and what we want in terms of like bikability and walkability and all these other things, but also just that dream of homeownership and stability that's just gone. Like, I don't think it's gonna come back soon for me, unfortunately, as a renter in the central city, and that is something that I think they really articulated very clearly that we need to keep striving for. We can't give up on this dream because it is possible, and we do. So I just want to lift it up and thank you for your participation. I really love the focus on VMT as a goal, reducing vehicles' miles traveled as a goal. And why I love it is because it's that marrying of transportation and housing and climate goals that really puts like a metric that we can look toward that'll see how these things intersect with each other. You know, it's not just about planning for corridors and planning for housing, it's about how do we make sure these things are coming together in a really intentional way? So want to lift up my interest in seeing that and more in the next draft plan, as well as echoing my colleagues' comments about increasing the FAR in high-opportunity areas and along transit. I think that is, and for folks who are nervous about that, as I've talked to folks 100 times about these changes, it's not a mandate. It doesn't mean someone's gonna come down and bulldoze a neighborhood. It just means that if a project is there and they want to get a little bit denser, that they can, and that they don't need to go through a whole process to do that. And so I just want to echo those comments because I think that's really important. As well as the parking changes, you know, I like to joke that Midtown was the experiment for reducing parking, eliminating parking mandates, and it's been a bumpy ride, I'm not gonna lie. There's definitely been projects where there's no parking, and suddenly the neighborhood nearby is like, "Where did all these cars come from?" So I know I've talked to staff about this, but just to reiterate my support for eliminating the parking, but also the need to couple that with intentional practices, like, how are we bringing in the alternative transportation? How are we informing residents when they come in about their options and about the fact that they aren't gonna get parking permits for the street and so that they know what they're coming into? And if they really do need that car, they're not ending up in a building where they can't park, because we've had to deal with those cases, too, where it's like, oops, and Matt Ironman and his team have helped us like find parking for them somewhere else in Midtown because they didn't know and they needed that car for one reason or another. So just want to echo that, and I'm very interested in the idea of looking at parking maximums. You know, when we were looking for like safe camping sites, it was interesting, in Midtown, there's not a lot of vacant land. A lot of the sites we assessed were actually parking lots because they weren't being used, and we have a lot of them throughout Midtown in the central city. And so I think it really speaks to the mode is changing, people are shifting their lifestyles, not as many households have two cars. So if we can look at what that parking maximum looks like, maybe it's not citywide, maybe it's more geographically based, maybe it's tied to FAR, you know, maybe there's some way we can be really strategic about how do we innovate on that front. And I really want to support the community benefit change that you're making here, and I want to make a very fine point on that, because I heard several comments about what it takes to have a healthy, sustainable community. And in my mind, part of what that takes is ensuring that everybody has access to that community, which does ensure some degree of affordability exists. Now, I also want to make really clear that in talking to staff, this doesn't eliminate the ability for developments to exceed FAR. It absolutely does not. All it means is that you have to apply for a rezone like you normally would. You can still build as high as you want. You want to exceed 15, that's amazing. Apply through the process, get the approvals, it's fine. All it does is eliminate the staff level sort of streamlining and tie it just to the density bonus law, just to affordability, so that that community benefit is really clear. And because I mentioned, it came up at doors, because it actually came up, like Midtown neighbors were saying, "I think a community benefit is affordable housing." And too often, community benefit is, hey, it's a housing project. And it's like, well, no, that's not implicitly what we want, and it doesn't mean, I don't think it's either or, and so I appreciate the concerns because it is a change, but I just want to draw the distinction that it doesn't mean that people can't exceed FAR. It just means that if you're gonna do that at the staff level, you need to have affordable housing, and if you're not, then you just go through the normal rezone application process. So I just want to note that distinction and really appreciate the alignment with what I see as an incredible goal in the Midtown area and Downtown area, which is affordability. I just looked at apartments.com, you know, this cool tool where you can look at it on a map, right? You can zoom in on the central city, and it lists all these apartments that are available right now and their price range. I saw units over $5,000 a month, right? And these are not family units, right? I mean, we talk about attracting families downtown. Some of us might want to have kids someday. You might need more than a studio apartment to do that and keep your sanity, and you can't do that in Midtown and the central city right now, because the closest you can get to affordability is gonna be a studio or one-bedroom, and you're naturally setting it up so that these families have to move out of the city when they start to have kids. And that's not something that I want us to be facilitating, either implicitly or not lack, just the lack of intention when it comes to affordability. So really want to point that out. Now, I'm gonna go on a totally different track, because not a lot of people talked about the environmental justice element. Some people did, and I was really excited to hear that, but this is a new state law. This is a state law that we've never done before. And when I came into office, that staff, I mean, we had plenty of briefings where I was like, "What about this? What about that? What about this?" And I just have to say that like general plans are normally really passive documents. They're not documents that are gonna come in and say, "We're gonna rebuild your corridor tomorrow." It's really meant to guide future projects. But this EJ element is different, because what this element is proposing are actual tools to address inequities in communities, which is really, really exciting. And just to call out a couple of those tools, you mentioned the amateurization ordinance. That could be huge. That's a way for us to say, "Hey, small industrial source, we know you exist next to this residential, but maybe when your ownership changes, or if you need a future permit, you're not gonna exist there anymore. And we're actually gonna provide incentives for you to locate in a part of town that makes more sense for that use so that we can start cleaning up these neighborhoods that might have auto uses or other things in there that are bad for their environments." I also want to especially highlight grocery store zoning. I mean, you all know, I've been asking Greg Noson and Matt, because I think I started asking you for that like on my first day. I'm like, "Can we create a grocery store zone?", which would be like a layer on top of commercial zoning that isn't just any commercial, but it says, "Hey, if you meet this criteria in these parts of town, maybe there's a sales tax incentive, right? Maybe there's some other incentive we give you to make sure that we're incentivizing food access in the lots that are ready for that, that we're trying to set that aside." And I know that was a huge issue in D2 when cannabis started up, because one of the concerns I heard a lot back then was that the distributors and the manufacturers were kind of gobbling up all of the grocery store-sized parcels, and they're like, "Okay, but wait a minute, where would the grocery store go? Like, if we get it..." Like, they're buying up all these parcels. And so how do we kind of create that space and distinction in the zoning so that we're actually manifesting the community that we're hoping to see, rather than just sort of hoping that that commercial zone turns into the type of commercial we hope it will be? So I'm really, really, really stoked about that, because I think it has a lot of potential and a lot of alignment with other goals that I've seen my colleagues trying to pursue. And then I want to add in, because you had, and I think, EJ 2.11 cottage food, finding ways to do cottage food. There's also a state law on microenterprise home kitchens that I would love, love, love for us to get the county to adopt so that we can have more food producers being able to sell non-cottage foods out of their home kitchens. So my two questions or suggestions or requests. One is the noise ordinance update, and Tom will know what I'm talking about in the fact there. We really, really, really need to update our noise ordinance. And I'm not saying this to be overly punitive on activations, but like, and I won't name any particular event, but let's just say there is an event that happens sometimes outside in Midtown that I live about 13 blocks from. And there is not a time that I have not been able to sit in my apartment with my dual-pane windows closed and feel the bass in my apartment all afternoon while that event's going on. And so how do we be thoughtful about encouraging activations in streets and in parks and in while also being cognizant of like the life of people who live nearby those spaces? So I know that we've updated the noise ordinance for health clinics, but I really, really, really want us to think about putting that on the work plan for updating it more broadly, because it is super out of date, and I know I've talked to code a zillion times about this, but like, if we could put that on the work plan coming out of this general plan, that would be amazing, and I'm happy to submit a council member request form if that's better. But I really, really, really want us to update that ordinance so that we can give better But I really, really, really want us to update that ordinance so that we can give better guidance to these events and they know what to expect and the neighbors and the city has tools when events get a little too loud and to help guide that. And then the last question actually I have for Greg and team, the urban forestry master plan. You might have guessed that I might have asked about this, but it caught my eye that I don't believe I saw that in here. I know you noted it in comments, but can you give an update on the status of the urban forestry master plan?
Yes, and public works staff is here, but I think I can answer your question. So we're excited, they're working on public review draft. It'll be out by the end of this year. And then it is going to follow the adoption of the general plan right away. So it's going to be ready. This really tees up, like I said, some of these other plans, helps provide environmental clearance, provides that policy support. So both actually the urban forest plan and the Sacramento parks plan will be adopted directly after the general plan.
Okay, okay. I know I have a lot of very vocal tree defenders in my district, and I really agree with them when it comes to some of the comments you've heard that if you're not intentional about it, then how do you protect it? And I know we've brought up concerns about maintenance and how to manage sidewalk trees and other things. So really just want to encourage if it's possible to pace that with the general plan. I know that's a lot, but I do believe that was our goal early on. And so I know folks are anxious to at least see the draft so that they can give what I'm sure will be extensive comments about what we could do and feedback that we're really going to need. Because as was mentioned, it really complements the transportation goals, the park goal, all of the things that we're talking about. If we don't maintain our tree canopy, it just gets a little less awesome in the city of Sacramento. So I just want to encourage us to try to pair that up as best we can because I know staff, people are expecting that and really want to see the draft as soon as possible. So that's it for my comments and questions. Thank you again, team. Amazing job. Really proud of what we're doing so far.
Thank you, Councilmember Talemantes. Mayor Protem Veng.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Vice Chair. First, what happened? Did something happen? Oh, okay. Oh, all right. Well, thank you, thank you, Vice Chair for calling me in the queue. First, I wanted to just to take this time to thank our planning team. I want to thank Matt, Amy, Greg, and all of our planning staff really for your hard work to get us to this moment. And I also want to thank all the residents that are in space in the chambers with us today and also all the community members that called in today to help provide insights so that we can update our general plan. You know, we're not just planning for residents now, we're not just planning for us, but really for five to seven generations after us, right? I often think about my grandma, my grandpa and our elders in the Moan community and when they discuss issues and they're trying to address complex issue, whether it was back in Laos and Thailand, the villages, or now, they often think about future generations and that's how they make plans. And so when I think about the general plan update, I think about really seven generations, right? When we're no longer here and what type of city we want to have for our loved ones and all of our families. And so again, just really want to thank staff for their time. And I do want to uplift a few items that I think it's really important as we think about shaping and building our city to really address the racial inequities, but also the growth in our city. And so definitely want to echo both of my colleagues, Councilwoman Maple and Valenzuela, who said the plan is almost perfect, but we can be a little bit more ambitious. So not really questions to planning staff, but more of just comments that you can incorporate in the plan. Just some things I definitely want to highlight, you know, I appreciate the general plans update thus far, really allowing for more mixed use in all of our neighborhoods throughout the city, right? Residential, commercial, recreation, because we know that if we're able to do that, it reduces long commutes and we can really promote active transportation. I know that I've heard from some residents in District Eight that are worried about density because of lack of infrastructure, and I just kind of want to speak on that. As someone who's sit on Secog as well, you know, I believe, you know, having density is really important as we think about building and building for a city that's growing really fast, right? But as a region, I believe that we can also work collectively to create that type of infrastructure that can support that density. And so just want to let residents in my district know that our concern about density is that I'm committed to working with Secog and our regional partners to really fight for resources to build that type of infrastructure so that we could address your density concern. This plan does, it is ambitious. It does move towards more density, more walkability, which is what I envision, which is what I want. And it's also what we want for our families and our youth. Councilwoman Valenzuela, she's really good at hitting the button first, but I also wanted to mention the EG component, right? This is the first time in our general plan that we're including a significant component about environmental justice, right? From prioritizing investment in historically underserved communities to healthy food zoning. So I just really want to talk a little bit about that in my comments as staff is taking notes. You know, as we prepare to address our ambitious climate goals, it's really important that we bring our low income communities and families and neighborhoods along. I often think about the electrification or any type of initiative or policy that we're pushing the city because we want to reach our climate goals, but making sure that we're bringing those communities along with us so that they can prepare for those sudden changes, right? And that we actually have a plan and the resources to do that. I want to uplift the EG component really around tree canopy. And I think my heart and hustle fellow is watching this, I want to give her a shout out to her in particular because during the past over six months that she's worked in our office, she's conducted a tree canopy analysis of our city canopy efforts and actually where we're falling short, right? And I think many of you know that in District Eight and in South Sacramento, we lack tree canopy. And our office during my time here for the past two years have worked really hard to plant more trees. And we know from her research that she's done is that District Eight actually has the lowest number of city maintained trees among all council districts, but we actually have the highest number, potential number for planting sites at 894 sites where we can be planting trees. You know, in her research, she also shared with me that, you know, routinely the city of Sacramento plants around 650 trees throughout the city on public right of way, but it's spread equally. And so something I just want to know is that, you know, as we work on the expansion of our urban forestry, I really hope that we're spending our resources and our energy in our low income communities that are under canopy. I know earlier this year with storm, we lost many trees. And as we think about restoring some of those trees, and I know many of those trees were in downtown or Land Park, I just want to emphasize that it's going to be really important that as we think about restoration and planting trees, that we really start in those neighborhoods that's already lacking. And then lastly, back to tree because I'm big on the tree canopy because South Sac needs more trees, is that, you know, we are doing our very best to work with the Tree Foundation to plant more trees on residential, encouraging private properties to plant more trees. But I've heard from the Metavee Urban Tree Project and also community advocates that as a city, we could be doing more to hold ourselves accountable, right? And so something I think that will be really important that I've heard from the Metavee Urban Tree Project and also from Sadah, who is probably watching this, my heart and hustle fellow who is a District Eight resident, you know, she shared with me that we could be doing much, a much better job at planting trees in the public right of way. I know this also means, and I want to hold space for this too, that if we do do that, it means more resources for our city to take care of our trees. But if this is a key component of our general plan, I think it's really important for us to name that in our general plan. And then lastly, you know, as the co-chair of our Food Justice Task Force now with Councilwoman Maple, I also want to uplift the healthy food zoning in the EJ section. I think that's really exciting. That's going to be really important for us, for it to be a guide for us to promote and protect really healthy food options. It's important, right, to preserve grocery store in underserved areas through zoning designation, but also figuring out the ways in which we can increase access points for our unhoused neighbors throughout the city as well. And I know that I'm going to be working with Councilwoman Maple to figure out how we can address that. So I just want to give a shout out for that EJ component in particular because I know it's going to be really key in driving our council in addressing food insecure neighborhoods. And then lastly, for residents that are watching, you know, I just want to remind folks that this isn't the finalized plan tonight, right? There's going to be many more opportunities to incorporate your input before the final vote, before the final adoption. So really encouraging residents to continue providing feedback. I know there was a really great representation from District Four, so shout out to District Four residents, but also wanting to make sure that we also, you know, get the Del Paso, the D2 and parts of D3 and Oak Park and D8 in particular to have their voices heard as well. And so with that, yeah, I look forward to hearing more from our community members in the next few weeks and looking to work with my colleagues to ensure that, you know, we have a more sustainable and affordable and accessible city for all of our families. So again, thank you staff for your hard work and yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Veng. Now, Councilmember Talemantes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's see, so we need more housing yesterday, today, tomorrow, the next day, and the years to come. So I'm prepared to support you as staff as you get creative with coming up with housing policies to help increase the supply here in Sacramento. Agree with Mayor Protem Veng on tree canopy. I had a whole section on that, but I'm going to gloss over it because Mayor Protem, you spot on. Kudos. And I know Councilwoman Lilly isn't here, but we both asked for policy on addressing the looming crisis of seniors losing their homes. So as we consider housing strategies to make sure that we can incorporate that in some way, shape or form, that would be wonderful. For anyone that lives north of the river, it's a challenge to come downtown because of the lack of public transportation and the infrastructure in place to get here safely via bike. So we need to get, continue to get creative on this matter, securing funding to help with that connectivity component. And I know people in Natomas will continue to submit comment on this. Like the Mayor Protem said, this is a presentation, but there's still room for everyone to give their input on this. So for anyone that lives in Natomas, the District Three Community Coalition will meet next Thursday, August 17th at 6:00. City staff will be there to present this via Zoom, so go ahead and continue providing feedback as we move forward. And that's about it. Thank you, and thank you for your work on it.
Thank you, Councilmember Talemantes. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Again, thank you to the city staff and the multiple avenues that you reached out from my farmer's market to really appreciate. You were at my Latino Chicano event, and I know the community was actually heavily giving input. So I appreciate you looking at alternative ways and meeting the community where they are. So I'm going to speak quickly. Don't worry, I gave staff all of this, but I think it's important to point it out on the record to know where District One is thinking and then also for the community to understand where I come from. In high school, I lived in Europe and I had a bus take me to school 13 miles every day. However, if I was ambitious, there was a bike route I could take with the parents, the host parents that I lived with, that would take me from one city to the next if I wished to bike into school every day. I have backpacked around Europe twice, never needing a car, always using transit. And when I bought my first house in South Natomas and I worked downtown at the Capitol, I biked to work every day through Discovery, showered at 24 Hour and locked my bike at the Capitol, and it was safe and I was never worried. And so I think we need to take the best policies that we've seen that have happened elsewhere in countries that have been around a lot longer than us and start applying transit-oriented development and European policies to how we, how we look at things. Suggestions that I have that I hope you will look at, I would like all of Secog's suggestions in their letter adopted and inputted into our general plan. Thank you for Secog coming and for the hard work that they've done on that. On MAP ERC6, future noise contour, North Natomas will be a high heat zone, so we need to be updated to show that Elk Horn on the northern city limits is high traffic, high noise, and that we need to add some mitigation for Elk Grove, Elk Horn Boulevard. For land use and placemaking suggested changes, we do need to increase the FAR in high opportunity areas and make it equity and equal throughout the city. I do support, as Councilmember Maple and others have suggested, that we need to throughout the general plan consistently adjust the one-fourth mile to a half mile to encourage density in the FAR. I am a walk to school volunteer in Natomas with my kids and we walk eight minutes. Eight minutes is not that far. Half a mile is, you know, if you're not meandering with kids, is about a 10-minute walk. So if kids can do that daily, adults can do it even more so. And so increasing that density and FAR allotment out to a half mile should be required throughout the city. On creating a prohibition of any drive-through, make that a half mile, not a quarter mile of any existing or proposed light rail. On LUP 413, prohibit new gas stations or modernizations unless the pump provides a one-on-one electric Level 3 charging. We, if we are going electric, let's not say for every three pumps, you put in one. We are already woefully behind on the number of electric charging units. And this is realizing many of our gas stations are owned by small businesses and families who have that. They know that in order to stay alive, they need to look at what is the future and the future is EV. So when they come for modernization, it's giving the incentives and helping so that there's a one-on-one pump per EV station. For North Natomas specifically, I thank the staff, but we can kind of tell nobody's really lived in North Natomas who drafted that. And I'm sure my community was not shy about saying that. We need to acknowledge in the general plan that light rail construction is decades away. Gosh, I've been living in Natomas since 2000 and it was imminent in 2000. And I don't think we're going to see it anytime soon, but we need to address for that. And one of the suggestions is adding in language that RT looks at rapid bus transit using the green line because we know the green line at some point, maybe in the future we'll get light rail, but in the meantime, let's increase that. There are many important community elements that are potentially missing. There is a major disconnection. And I have mentioned this before, I have lived on the west side of I-5 since '05. Unfortunately, we've had children killed in trying to cross either through Arena or Del Paso. We need to reinstate the snowy egret crossing to make it a bike and pedestrian crossing over the freeway and increase the, because it was in the North Natomas Community Finance Plan, it was defunded, but it needs to come back up because that is a definite need. I can tell you, I would rather drive south further to go to the grocery store than cross the freeway. The freeway is some invisible barrier and I've talked to all of my neighbors and we all feel the same way. For whatever reason, it's closer down the other side of the freeway for that grocery store, but we won't go. There is no town center in Natomas, so we need to change reference. It is a community development name of which it has a Safeway and Small, but there is no town center. We are hoping Innovation Park can be looked at as our town center. It is briefly mentioned, but our historical reference needs to be the Witter Ranch Farmhouse. That is the 1920s historical family farm in North Natomas and really is our only historical reference. Again, we need to increase reference. There are not several bus routes to downtown. There are two and they take 45 minutes or an hour and a half and you got to jump on different buses. So that is a problem. If we are looking at Natomas as helping eliminate cars and addressing climate goals, then we need to make sure that we have transit and ways to get downtown. For suggested policy changes on North Natomas, Land Use Plan 1, increase mixed-use nodes and high-end density within a half mile. LUP 2 in the North Natomas, create a town center. There is no town center. LUP 5, open space buffers need to be increased to a minimum of 500 feet for any new development adjacent to agriculture, open space, and the Swanson Hawk nesting sites. Buffers of 250 and 300 are not enough. We also need to add in for mobility, North Natomas M as Mary 6, traffic calming measures. The city needs to recognize that speed along Del Paso, it is one of our high dangerous areas, that this needs to be addressed in the North Natomas Community Plan, and we need to add speed reduction measures. We need to amend North Natomas YPRO3, park placemaking. We need to delete the word "shall" consider including and amend it to say "shall collaborate with developers and community members to promote inclusion." I am on the tree canopy rage because North Natomas is a master plan community, but our tree canopy is woefully behind many others, and we need to make that a priority, not in "should include," but a "shall include" and shall work with any new development in that regard. Organized sports and recreational facilities, we need to add that in as a number five in NYPRO. The city shall develop and maintain quality facilities, including sport courts and fields and fields for a variety of organized sports to ensure active recreation opportunities are met for the growing community. Community center location, I understand that it is named the North Natomas Community Center. It is an event center. If you look at community centers throughout the city, to even possibly have the community rent for a day, it's $2,000. That is not a community center, nor do we have, after a year it's open, appropriate programming for the community. So we need to look at that. And tree planting and parking lots, we need to be added as an environmental justice as well, because we know Sacramento is heating up. Predictions are over 110 by 2040. The only way to specifically reduce the temperature is more tree canopy, less paved. So also, considering my fellow councilmember Lolo is not here, when we're looking at the North Sacramento Community Plan, we need to add transit connections, which, thank you, Councilmember Talamantes, I am in agreement on that, as well as adding an environmental justice aspect for tree planting in parking lots. You can drive all over D2 and see many black parking spots, black pavements, but no trees. On the special study area, the Natomas Basin Study Area, on the land use planning A1 area of concern, I'm supporting the immediate implementation of this statement. And then tree canopy in the general plan, when you look at the implementation part of it, ERC A2 Tree Education, the current implementation schedule is midterm 2030, 2035. We need to move that to near term. The longer we wait to plant trees, the longer it takes for the benefit to reach us. That needs to be in align. So anything dealing with tree canopies that has mentioned midterm implementation, we need to make. Near bus shelter design, ERC A5, change that from midterm to near term, because many of those who are using transit, why would you walk along the streets and stand in 110 when you don't have shelter? And then add in a study of rapid transit along the Green Line, should be in there, as well as cooling landscape standards, change from near to near-term alignment with tree education. I know that was a lot. Again, I have sent it to you. Thank you for all your hard work, but I think we are almost there. And when we look at where can we be as a city of Sacramento of trees, but also leaders in climate change, and looking at how can we implement it so that people can walk and bike to work and get a little exercise in a safe way at the same time. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Kaplan. I appreciate your thoroughness in some of these particular items that I share, I share your points of view here. I'll make sure, I guess, when I think about the general plan, we just had our neighborhood association, and over the last few weekends, a number of us have been talking about our kids, and when we're outside, now they're at their age where they're out there riding their bikes, and some of us lament the kind of world we live in today, where we all remember a time when our parents allowed us to go to school on our own, in elementary school, on our bikes, to go visit our friends a few blocks away. And, you know, and I'm not saying that, you know, this is a case of the wonder years or whatnot, but we do unfortunately have seen a change in our society that has led to a place where we don't trust our kids to go far, if we can't see them within the same block, where we have, you know, communities where there's three lanes in one direction in a, you know, in a inner part of the city. I'm not talking about a freeway, I'm talking about a boulevard. And where, you know, if you're trying to cross that boulevard, not even if you're a young kid, but some of our seniors who are trying to get across and can no longer drive and are walking around, it becomes a challenge. And we've built a society, unfortunately, that's created less canopy, higher heats, less ability to walk around in, higher obesity rates, poorer air quality, longer commutes, less time with our kids and our family. Our kids don't have that level of connection with our parents. Young kids, you know, fall disconnected. When something happens, if they have to commute an hour or two because of the way we planned our region, you know, it's hard to get back to where they are. We've created a society, unfortunately, where we looked and prioritized cars and vehicle speed over community. And I think this plan here, you know, someone brought up the safe routes to school, and that just hit very close to me personally. And I will, you know, ask that our staff in some of, you know, to look at it through the point of view of a young family with young kids. Because if we don't have a general plan that's building our city, and I think leading for our city, for other cities in our region, that doesn't take that into consideration, then we're setting a poor example, because parents, we want the safest for our kids. And so what do we do? We buy a big SUV because we don't feel that, you know, that they're able to ride their bike to school. We drive them in that big SUV to protect them because it's a three-lane boulevard where we've got to go. And then the kids grow up thinking that that's the only point of transportation. You know, I'm very proud of this council and our previous council, and our staff here that have worked now for a number of years of changing that conversation by funding free bus for our young kids so that they can be willing to take public transportation. I think that one of the comments here talked about tree canopy. If it isn't, if we don't have a canopy space like we do in Elmhurst, and we see challenges already where you can walk in the shade to a bus stop during a hot summer day, then we create a disincentive. If we don't create an environment where people want to walk around, then we're creating more situations where public health is an issue, and more so, the poorer air quality. So I was struck by that, and so I don't want to go into too much detail, other than to say that it's important to think about some of the basic things about getting to school, how hot it is when you're outside, what kind of encouragement we want, the amount of housing that we need by increasing our density. And I do want to thank our SACOG partners, you know, particularly one staffer at SACOG that was innovative in creating Green Means Go, to start thinking about how we fund those projects to understand the infrastructure challenges that we've had. The concepts of the bus rapid transit system and thinking about how we do that, that's imperative. A couple of things that are going to come up, and I want to make sure that those constituents in my council district know that I want to prioritize the growth of our canopy. Now, we've grown our canopy citywide, but it's nowhere near where we need to be to address the heat island effect. And particularly in certain areas of our city where a lot of the single-family homes are rented and not owned by homeowners, there needs to be a conversation about those rental properties and those property owners ensuring that there is canopy space in that area. So when we talk about our policy for tree canopy, I want us to start thinking about that aspect, is how do we make sure that we're looking at those areas. And of course, North SAC and South SAC, you see where the poorest level of canopy is, and it's also the highest number of rental home property, rental housing units there are. I think you heard from the council, a support for increasing the floor area ratio. I want to thank the staff for being aggressive on this. I think what was proposed here today shows that we moved the needle in thinking about moving away from the car-centric world and thinking about how we reduce VMT. Our housing planning and our transportation planning need to work with that together on that aspect. Connectivity, mobility, I think all of those are key pieces in there. Again, I feel about where we are today, it's in a positive way. We've got more conversations to come on this, and I think the biggest thing is, what are we doing about making it safe to walk, to use alternative transportation? And one key thing that I think is innovative, that's going to change the dynamic, is just the introduction and the revolution of electric bikes. You know, e-bikes have really changed the accessibility of what can be used, and we should be thinking not of our city of the past, but thinking prospectively, what type of city is in the future. The fact that we've changed mobility in a very unique way, and so many parents that I know in my own neighborhood, including myself, have opted rather than to buy the new minivan, to buy a cargo bike where both my kids, you know, are in, on the bike with me, and we're doing our groceries, drop-off, and everything together. But if the roadway's not safe, if we don't have tree canopy to make that a fun, pleasurable ride, and if we don't feel, if parents and families don't feel that we have a city that brings all that together, then we're not going to be able to make that change that we need to. We know for sure now, when community members are walking in neighborhoods, they're walking to SAC City Brews, they're walking to Talik Lounge, they're supporting those local small businesses, not the mega shops, not the big, massive corporate box stores. They're supporting our local small businesses when we create communities that are walkable, interconnected. And so I'd like to just say that that's the framing that I'd like our general plan to inhibit, to portray, and not inhibit, but to portray, and to say, what kind of family do we want in the future? And it's the one that I wish, you know, was still around, where our kids could go out there and feel happy and not be in the heat, not be feeling safe to be outside. So I'll stop there and say that I think there's a lot more to do. You guys have heard me for the last eight years talk about the general plan. So, thank you with that. And with that, that's the end of the comment period, Madam Clerk, for this. And I will encourage the city manager to make sure that we notice all those different meeting locations for those public settings. Thank you again to the staff again. And I do think that our staff deserves a big round of applause for this great project. It's an undertaking. Hopefully, people will be clapping when we actually vote, so, devils in the voting time. Okay, Madam Clerk.
So Vice Mayor, we need to move down to council comments, ideas, questions, AB 123 reports.
Okay, any council comments, AB 123 reports? I haven't adjourned in memory, but outside of that, Councilmember Talamantes?
Oh, he's gone. Yeah, he's driving. He's flying out.
Okay, so this weekend, on Saturday, I hosted an event called Natomas Mania, which was a big hit. We had wrestlers at the South Natomas Community Center, and Councilmember Jennings and I, I guess fought technically, for the key to Natomas. And this event was put on by our Parks Commissioner Robbie Robbins and Joe Flores, and it was just really fun. So I just wanted to thank Councilmember Jennings. And then Natomas Street East is this Thursday at Orchard Park. So if you are hungry, looking for dinner, come by our park.
Thank you, Councilmember Talamantes. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This Friday, come walk with me at North Natomas Regional Park. We meet at 9:00 AM by the farmer's market area and start a two-mile walk at 9:05. Also, this Friday, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, it's going to be a beautiful Friday. Join me. I'm having an AAPI celebration with tons of performers from different heritages. There will be food trucks, a cocktail bar, bounce house, and vendors. Farmer's Market still goes through September every Saturday. And then what I'm really excited is, council members, please mark your calendars for Saturday, August 26th, Summer at City Hall. They brought up kind of their, I want to call it the outlet, outfit. We are hosting our youth to do their clothing swap event and teenage hangout with games, live DJ, food refreshments, and we are helping lead the youngsters in the next steps for that. But come join us. It'll be from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, at the same time the farmer's market is happening at North Natomas Regional Park.
Mark your calendars, August 26th. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thank you. Really excited to announce the 28th Annual Sacramento Powwow. I hope you will all come by. It is a really incredible event at O'Neil Park. It will be Friday through Sunday this week, the 11th through 13th. There is a grand entry on Saturday at 7:00 PM that I will be participating in, and I hope you come through, get some of my favorite jewelry there from local vendors, as well as obviously getting to meet and see a lot of the tribes doing their dancing and celebrating their culture. So I hope you'll come by, and I invite everybody to join us, especially on Saturday at 7:00 PM for the grand entry.
Is that Colonial Park, you said?
O'Neil Park.
Oh, O'Neil. O'Neil Park. Okay.
My district.
Good, I was like, well, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you guys at O'Neil Park. Councilmember Maple?
Thank you. I have one event coming up this week, on Thursday, at McClatchy Park from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. We are doing the back-to-school barbecue with Saint Hope. So that's going to have food, games, and prizes. So we're really excited. We want people to bring out their young ones and come enjoy right before school starts back up again. And then this Friday, bright and early, at 5:50 AM, I will be joining our solid waste division for a ride-along. And I'm really excited to do that, because that's keeping with our efforts to really understand and know what our workers are going through every day and what their day-to-day life is like, and help me make better decisions as a council member every day and do better by them. So I am excited for that, and I'm going to need a lot of coffee.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Maple. Drink that coffee. Okay, Councilmember Mayor Protem Vang?
Thanks. Just wanted to announce some events that are coming up. We, for those that came out at Valley High for our concert in the park, thank you so much for coming out. We have another concert in the park happening at Carrillo Park on Saturday, August 19th, from 4:30 to 8 o'clock, so make sure that you swing by for that. And then on August 20th, we also have a free swim pool party happening at Carrillo Pool. And then we have two big events happening. Please save the date for Save Health and Wellness Fair at Rosa Parks at K-8 School. That's happening on Saturday, September 9th, from 11:00 to 3:00. And then South SAC Festival, Shasta Park as well, happening on October 21st, from 11:00 to 3:00, and really encouraging the public to come join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Vang. Always some amazing events in District 8. Appreciate that. Okay, with District 6, for those in the Colonial Heights neighborhood, we're going to be having a community meeting on the intersection of 54th Street and 22nd to talk about, of all things, the impacts of parking and traffic issues. And one of the issues we'll be talking about is how the opening of the new housing project, Mercy Housing, but also how do we encourage a different approach here. So join us for the community meeting with Colonial Heights neighbors on 22nd Avenue and 54th Street. Always a good block party there. And then on Friday at 5:00 at Oaky Park, I want to encourage people to come out to our office hours, where we have our food trucks in partnership with the Capital Optimist Club and Neighbors of College Glen. And it's a great time to get together, enjoy, and the new dino park that's over at Oaky Park. But more importantly, if you've got your constituent code issues, come and meet us at our office, because we take City Hall to the neighborhood on Friday at Oaky Park at 5:00 PM. With that, that looks like it concludes council comments. Madam Clerk, if we can go to comments of the public on items not on the agenda.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have 20 speakers signed up. The first is Arthur Ringwald. Following Arthur is David, then Michael Baker.
Yes. My name is Arthur Ringwald, and I am a resident of Riverview Plaza, which is two blocks down the street that way, in District Number Four. And we have had a very unfortunate event on the 20th, morning of the 27th or the evening of the 26th, where the building was vandalized. A lot of the residents, they'll keep their cars, and cars were slashed, and paint raised all over the place. And anyway, I'm, so anyway, I'm a substitute teacher for the Sacramento City Unified School District, and I had $562 damaged down to my car, $562, according to, we have some estimates here for that. And I did have $500 deducted by insurance, which didn't do much good. Did a police report and all that stuff. And I believe it is the duty of the landlord, according to this book here, and it says, California Tenants Rights, and it says, oh, yes, we have talks about, when it comes to security, judges have, landlords must be taken reasonable precautions to protect tenants from foreseeable criminal assaults. So I hope you all help us take care of that. We think the SHRA who owns it should take care of this, and I want to thank you. The SHRA should take care of this bill, and I'll have the information here anyway. Thank you very much, and thank you for listening and paying attention, and appreciate it. And thank you particularly, Mrs., yeah, and thanks very, thanks a lot. All right.
Yes, sir, I'm going to ask.
Valenzuela, right.
Hi, yeah. I'm going to ask my chief of staff, Zach, in the back there to come and give you information.
Okay, I'll be here.
Thank you.
I'm going to disappear.
Thank you. My next speaker is David, then Michael Baker.
My next speaker is David, then Michael Baker.
Not, then we're going to go ahead and move with the next item.
Michael Baker. Following Michael is Cherie Gordon.
Good evening. I'm Mike Baker. I'm the Vice President of the Board of Trustees for the Twin Rivers Unified School District. Just a short, a couple of years ago, Rick Jennings swore me in to take an oath of office to protect the students of the Twin Rivers Unified School District, and that's why I'm here. Joshua's House. Councilwoman Kaplan and Vang, as former school board members, I would ask that you would join Councilwoman Talamontes in getting questions for us on Joshua's House. We can't get questions, or we can't get answers to our questions, and neither can the councilwoman. It's concerning that this facility will have narcotics, fentanyl, ketamine, dopamine, within three yards of where our kids are. We can't get answers on how that will be stored, how that will be distributed, and who will be distributed. We've asked for security. What kind of security will be in place? We can't get answers to that. They told us there'll be a 10:00 curfew. Does that mean the residents will be able to get drugged up on dopamine, ketamine, fentanyl, and then go out to the playground where our third graders are playing? We can't get answers to that question. Is it a traditional housing, or is it a hospice facility? We can't get questions of that, we can't get answers to that question either. Our city councilwoman has tried, our school district has tried, the community has tried, and they've shut us out. They are bound and determined to build this facility without communicating with the school district or without communicating with the city at all. Councilwoman Talamontes, so far, thank you for your support in protecting kids. Councilwoman Kaplan and Vang, and Councilmember Jennings, as former school board members, you guys would be up here too, asking the same questions guaranteed that this facility was getting put within three yards of your school. I ask that you please join Councilwoman Talamontes in helping us get some of our questions answered to make sure our kids can have a safe, clean learning environment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Cherie Gordon, then Rebecca Sandoval.
Good evening, council members, Vice Mayor. My name is Cherie Gordon. I live in District 6. Recently, I addressed my concerns about the homeless encampments in Colonial Heights to Mr. Guerrero. I've come here tonight to lambaste the mayor, but also to thank Mr. Guerrero because I believe after two days of hearing my concerns, we did see, or I did see, your team arrive. On the third day, I saw the police arrive, and the homeless were dispersed. The alley that was totally blocked by tents and bicycles and motorcycles were cleared. However, Mr. Guerrero, three hours later, they were back. So not only is enforcement needed, but also vigilance. And as I told you at Colonial Heights Park, that I, a 76-year-old woman, could not walk down the sidewalk of Stockton Boulevard in San Francisco. I had to use the bike lane. There are other neighbors, and we have all been talking, that were fed up. And if it takes me coming every week, I will. And I will bring back next week another neighbor of mine, and then another.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Sandoval, then Charles Fost.
I'm Rebecca Sandoval, trustee, Twin Rivers Unified School District. Yolo Cares will be operating Joshua House Volunteer Hospice, volunteer. Following a community meeting hosted by Councilman Talamontes, Mr. Dressing, Executive Director of Yolo Cares, sent a most troubling letter concerning those in attendance at the meeting. Dr. Steve Martinez, Superintendent for Twin Rivers Unified School District, replied to the letter as follows. "Twin Rivers Unified School District attended the meeting hosted by Councilmember Talamontes as a participant. Our district is formally opposed to the location of the project, and we join with members of our school community to keep them informed of our ongoing, ongoing efforts to address our shared concerns about the location of this project. Your request for an Ethics Committee review over a committee meeting comprised of primarily Hispanic parents in a historically underrepresented, under-resourced neighborhood where they are voicing their objections about a project across the street from where their children attend school is concerning, labeling those concerns as you have done as simple nimbyism, further marginalizes them as individuals, as parents, and as a community. It says their concerns are not valid. It says their concerns don't matter. We are well aware of the volume of homeless support services in our community. We have a high level of resources in our backyard, and as a school district, we recognize the vital importance of a strong community response to help our unhoused neighbors and students. To be clear, this community's concerns about the project have repeatedly been ignored and simplifying them down to nimbyism only if reinforced that there's never been a meaningful attempt to listen, to address them. The community individuals at the meeting are upset, frustrated, and angry. Your characterization of them, however, is misguided and violent, is untrue, and further perpetuates a negative stereotype of a community who has been silenced. Twin Rivers has made clear from the onset and have asked for specific mitigation requests on multiple occasions should the project move forward at the current site."
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sandoval.
Charles Fost, then Mac.
Hope for Sacramento is showing the documentary Beyond Homeless: Finding Hope at Land Park this Saturday, the 12th. Between 7:00 and 8:00 p.m., we're holding a discussion about Sacramento and California homelessness and the Haven for Hope shelter model. We will play the movie after about an hour of discussion. All of you are invited if you want to come. So that's what I had to get out the way for Hope for Sacramento. Now I kind of want to discuss what's going on in some of these safe ground sites. From what I see in here when I'm at Miller Park frequently, almost every day, helping some of the homeless there, trying to get them whatever help that I can get them, it sounds like the dogs at your guys' animal shelters are treated better than your homeless. The dogs certainly have more access to healthcare and clean water and air conditioning, electricity, than any of the homeless people sleeping in your guys' safe grounds. And that's something that really needs to sink in because there is mentally ill, physically challenged, physically disabled children at some of these places who are sleeping just outside of them that don't have any access to any of this stuff in the city. But the dogs do, the cats do. So something really needs to change quick, and it can't be building more safe grounds. They're not something that's suitable for humans to be in. It's not something the dogs can live in. So whatever happened last week and the, let's build more of these things is a joke. Don't pursue that.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mac, then Nikki Jones.
Good evening, council. McKenzie, organizer with the Carcerate Sacramento. You know, I do some tenant work, but now I'm coming today as a resident of District 5. I'm aware that you all had slated the Alhambra and W encampment for sweep. Luckily, you all are under a temporary restraining order to not allow for that sweep to happen this week. But I guess why I come tonight is because when I know that they fall back in the queue, what I hope you understand is that I'm a community organizer. You know what we can do about it. And so instead of actually having to do, do it the way that we've normally done it, I'd rather work with you all to ensure that you all are supporting that encampment. Compliance doesn't look like you walking up and giving eviction tags and saying, you're out of compliance, you got to go. Compliance looks like helping folks understand what the rules and regulations are. It looks like supporting those folks and moving their items. It looks like offering bath and trash services so that way they can clean up some of that mess that you all are bitching about, and all of the other things, right? And so because I'm in that community, and those are my neighbors, I'm going to take a special interest in this encampment because it's a long-term one. It's been there for years, and while we cannot offer housing or services and instead want enforcement, no, we don't need enforcement, ma'am. We need housing and services. Enforcement hasn't worked. It's why we end up kicking people out to the county, then kicking them back out to the city, then they go into the American River Parkway, now we're sweeping them out. So we just keep doing this, and this is why we even talk about the idea of a safe ground, in which we said, don't co-opt our language unless they're self-governed and in spaces where they have deemed appropriate for themselves and their community, then you're just, again, forcing people and forced compliance. So I can like go on for days and days, but I'm just letting you know, I would hope to be able to reach out, that the city is going to send out services to Alhambra and W because otherwise we're going to have to pack the board or the council room and keep you from sweeping them, and I just don't want to do that. Don't waste our time or our money, like, let's just do this in a way that.
Thank you for your comments.
Works together. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nikki Jones, then Fatima.
Hey, all, yeah. We understand that litigation is like not a cool tool to always be engaged with. We know it's like a last resort thing that happens in the direst of situations when people are literally suffering real bad outside. It's not, people don't just do that because it's like fun or they think like, oh, yeah, we'll really get them this time. It's, it's really about the suffering that people see and the way that we've seen it repeatedly for years and years. And so that's why when we come about this, this one encampment, okay, you know, we understand it's high priority, and what that should mean and what it does mean are really different things. And so when DCR goes out there once a week for, say, a month, there's really not the kind of work that can be done. The really serious social work that's necessary for people is really longer-term work than that. And folks have said, okay, well, DCR came out and they offered me Miller Park one week, and we said yes, and then we came back the next time, they told us we couldn't get in anymore, there was no more room. It's just, it's not the type of social work you think of when we say we're doing across-county deep engagement with these people. And so it just falls really, really shallow every time we hear that about the type of work that's done with folks, because we know what real engagement looks like, because we know what it really takes to work with people one-on-one, and when you times that by 30 people, it's just much more difficult than the capacity, I would say, that DCR has been had, and really the options that they offer, right? It's not, these options aren't the long-term solutions that people have really been waiting for, for years. People along that street have been on wait lists. They've been on wait lists for years. They get kicked off waitlist, they've been on waitlist for so long. You know what I'm saying? So it's really about how do we work with these people towards the long-term solutions in individualized, client-centered ways to get people to the next step? Because this two blocks down isn't going to be the next step, and we've seen this encampment grow because of sweeps in the area. That's why this camp is bigger than it used to be. So moving them to somewhere else is going to be.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Fatima, then Courtney.
Good evening. We have been studying the council's decision-making process, actions, and funding behind your decision-making process. Councilmembers sparked a bit of hope during last week's city council meeting where I witnessed majority of councilmembers listening, questioning, engaged, and respectfully challenging each other to think of a new, of new creative and more compassionate ways to address our city's homelessness public health crisis. I am here to share my experience as a neighbor of resident, of the residents of W and Alhambra. A few months ago, we witnessed an unhoused neighbor dead in his tent. His deceased body was being transported by an ambulance. I wonder how many people die in the streets that stories go unheard. A week ago, an elderly, unable-bodied resident had to be rushed to the ER. Our elderly friend is missing both legs, living in the streets. Fortunately, the residents have built community to help meet their needs to survive from being forced to live out in the streets. We keep us safe. During the last week's meeting, the city manager informed us that the cops would have to be present during sweeps because of unknown potential violence. On August 2nd, residents at W and Alhambra were tagged, and what I witnessed was approximately 12 to 15 cops standing around showing no interest to protect or serve some of the most vulnerable, the elderly, disabled folks out in the streets. Instead, they were standing around cracking jokes and continuing to break community trust through intimidation tactics and completely disengaged during the process. There was no sign of violence. I question how the city manager plans to collect data for public disclosure of the Homeless Response Protocol to ensure transparency and define potential violence for accountability purpose as you move forward with the Homeless Response Protocol Plan. I am aware of the lawsuit coming out of the district attorney's office.
Comments, your time is complete.
And encourage members.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Courtney, then Lex Lazar. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you for your comments. Please take your seat. Please take your seat. Thank you for your comments.
Please take your seat. Courtney? Courtney? I don't see Courtney. Lex Lazar. Following Lex is Reverend Paul Bryant.
Lex Lazar, back again. Still my birthday. And I'm here because of the encampment on W and Alhambra Street. This has been an issue since I moved to Sacramento. It's the reason why I'm running for the State Assembly, because when I go there, it's not compassionate for anybody. To have 30 individuals urinating and just being on the street is not compassionate for them. It's not compassionate for us as residents. When I walk the neighborhood, there are people that own apartment buildings. There are people that are doing remodels in their home, there's people that come to their home to steal their tools. There are peoples on bikes that patrol the neighborhoods. There are dogs that are barking at all hours of the night. Yes, it is hot outside, so we all have our windows open in the neighborhood. So we hear the screaming all day long. We smell the smells from the smoke of God knows what's out there. We are compassionate humans. We are. But it's not compassionate to have people on the street in their filth. That's not right. I went through 12 years of Catholic school. I never, in that whole process, learned that you leave people on the street that way. You don't do that. And to enable that, I've had these conversations with these individuals, heated conversations. It's not, it's very stressful, as you can tell. I've lost my composure. I think that's all I really need to say, but I still have time, because there are neighbors of mine here that cannot make it tonight. They're the ones that are right now at home trying to figure out why is it that our neighborhood is on the edge of becoming other parts of the state that are just out of control? You know, the more that we let this continue, the more the city will start to slip into that nebulous warp zone of compassion, but for who? Compassion for the residents, compassion for the individuals, or is it just to try to make you feel better about yourselves?
We want compassion for everybody, bro.
I think that's still my time, but I think that's the point I needed to make. Thank you all for your work. I'll talk to you guys later. Got to eat. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. Reverend Paul Bryant, Sr., then Armand Alexander.
Reverend Bryant, Sr.?
Yes, sir. First words I want to say is faithfully understand Christ's kindness. Can y'all relate to that? That's my new acronym for fuck, because we got to sometime realize in life that things that happen, it makes us fall short. I was hoping you was going to call me, Katie, but you didn't. Sometime I look forward from that. It shows what people care and they have a compassion. I live in the streets. I'm dealing with the homeless people. I know the insides and outs. If I push one button on them homeless people, can stop y'all movement in this city? Y'all ain't even thinking about that. They just done all this decoration down here on Third and W in between X and W. That's my first original resting pace where I went when God woke me up 12 years ago. That street, that corner, my house burned up three blocks behind that on Third and W. I mean, Third and U. But ever since then, I've been just trying to stay in the streets and help these people and keep them calm, because you don't realize that they're humble out there. They can go break in your house, they can go break in your grocery store, they can go break in your mall, they can go break in your car dealership. They can do all that. And they can take all the beautiful rocks that they put out there about these streets on Third, between X and W, and throw them in the street, put them on the freeway. See, because I got some people out there that are really strong. See, I walk around the leaders out there, because I'm the leader of them. So I'm trying to do something to keep them composed, so it's like, look, I can't make them give me no money. I got four nonprofits I invest in, y'all ain't giving me nothing. I don't know who to write to or who to call. I call your mom and your daddy, your sister. Somebody need to give me somebody to do something with these people on the street, because many of them out there because they don't want to be. Many of them out there because they want to be. So we got to separate that. I know how to put them to work, and that's the only thing they lack. They work every day. They working while we in here talking. Recycling, panhandling, and also just whatever they do. But there are plumbers, electricians, carpenters out there. I'm about to merge with this gentleman off of Folsom, and I'm going to do a show at the end of the month. It's going to be an outdoor event. It's going to be every type of jar of entertainment you can think there, but it's for my homeless people, for homeless for heaven. Please check me out.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Armand Alexander, then Les Light. Armand?
Armand Alexander, next speaker.
Les Light. Following Les is Robert Copeland, and then I have eight callers online.
Speaking again for the Sacramento Tenants Union, we would beseech you to stop all of the sweeps and address. the sweeps and address the homeless crisis, and the housing crisis, which is, you know, which is making all this happen. We've got an increasing number of vacant, vacant housing units in Sacramento. We're to the point where I think we really have to think seriously about a vacancy tax. I think you on the council should be standing with us to overturn Costa Hawkins and think seriously about enabling real rent control and real, real legal services for the precariously housed in Sacramento. This is what's putting people on the streets, is your failure to address the housing crisis in real terms. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Robert Copeland. Following Mr. Copeland is Amy.
As an ACE member, I echo what Les Light said. I was at a press conference earlier this morning with my city councillor, Katie Valenzuela, Katie Maple Miveng. We're in support. And as far as that RT, at least the capital, ACE is working on improving the RT bus system also. What we need is real housing in Sacramento that's low income, and we also need a way to have people not to become homeless, because what is that if you take one person off the street and three more become homeless? That don't work in my book. We need to reduce the homeless population in Sacramento County and statewide, and maybe nationwide. ACE is going to help do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Amy. May I be unmute?
Amy, please unmute.
I'm here. I'd like to remind the council that Ambassador Dodd, the ambassador to Nazi Germany right before World War II, made a note in his diary that the animals in Nazi Germany were treated better than
Madam Clerk, please instruct the speaker to speak to items germane to the city council's authority.
The government code, section 54954.3, provides that members of the public may address the council on any item that is in the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. So if you have comments regarding items on the jurisdiction of the city of Sacramento, please proceed.
Cool. Can I have that 15 seconds back while I was trying to get to why that was germane?
Continue your comments.
Before I was rudely interrupted?
Continue your comments.
Please proceed.
So, as I was saying, Ambassador Dodd noted those, noted that the animals in Germany were treated better than the lower ranks of people. And I'd like to piggyback on something Mr. Faust just said a little while ago, that the animals in this city have better free service than human beings do. And this country exists because a bunch of people thought, you know what, Europe does it better, so let's do that here. And how many people were killed and enslaved because of that? I think we're a little too European already. We should start looking to those who were here first, to those we murdered to become more European. So why not make all of our future city planning must work with the original tribes? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Lambert Davis.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, I have several things to say. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Ortiz. I remember him when I was growing up here. He's a wonderful human being. Second, this, well, first of all, to the banned back cheesecakes was not only did not, it also went viral at the Natomas event. We were invited there. Shout out to that District 3 move. We also were voted the number one cheesecakes in Northern California. You would think that would inspire the city manager's office and District 2 to reach out to us. We haven't heard anything. And also, tonight, I'm one of the only ones who mentions the violation of the Brown Act is constantly blatantly disregarded on this agenda. It's called the City Manager's Report. It was on the agenda again today. Nothing was done. The city manager has five assistant city managers. All of them make great salaries. You mean to tell me six people cannot give us a city manager's report? I want to know where the homeless money's going. It's not going to the beds. Is it being bid rigged and bid peddled to contractors? We need to see that. People are taking advantage of the homeless situation, and they have the money, but nobody wants to be bold enough to say it. It's very liberating for me to put the highlight on the city manager's report. As a family-owned business, I've submitted a lot of paperwork to that department, and I met all the criteria, and we still receive pennies when other people are getting grant money with no written agreements and still getting money. So shout out to the Davis family and the millennials for taking us viral.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Maria Elena.
Yes, good evening. My name is Maria Elena. I'm a former resident of District 4 and District 5. I lived right across the street from Alcoy Flats, right down the street from Loves and Fishes, and I lived right down the street from the homeless encampment that is currently on W and Alhambra. I was in that area from 2010 to 2013, when I was finally able to become a homeowner. I can tell you, you guys keep talking about this 2040 plan. You want to talk about families. My family was a young family at that time. I did not feel unsafe. Yes, we had a couple of break-ins happen in our personal vehicles, but that is because people were without services and without means. Now, the fact that you all continue to criminalize these disenfranchised groups, and then we have the audacity of school districts to come and talk about marginalized groups and their voices being suppressed, well, guess what? Those disenfranchised people with no home, that you continue to lack services, they have no voice. And I have to agree with the last caller. There is a lot of exploitation going on with that funding for the unhoused, and there is nothing to show for it except for less affordable housing and more unhoused people, and a lot of y'all taking trips out of state on our dime. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dylan Hoi Bianchi.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can.
Excellent. So I was a little slow to hop into the queue earlier, talking about the general plan, so I just want to make a quick comment on that first, and then I have another, another comment to make. So I just want to say, there's a lot of talk about, you know, dense, increasing density, you know, and infill development, stuff like that. And I think that while those things are not necessarily bad, increasing density and increasing supply of housing does not on its own solve any problems if you are not also making sure that the price of housing is going down. We are not facing a supply crisis, we're facing an affordability crisis. If the new supply is all a bunch of new luxury units that cost $3,000 a month that no one can afford, then you're not actually helping anybody. You're not making anything better. So it's important to make sure you're taking a look at exactly what new units are being built when you're increasing density and increasing supply. Secondly, I'd like to say, you know, I know the city, the city doesn't really want to talk about this, so some people might not be aware, but the city is under a restraining order currently from a judge who has required them to stop making sweeps during the heat. They had the same issue, same, similar issue last summer, judge ruled the same way, so it's not at all surprising. People have been coming here to tell y'all that you need to stop doing these inhumane sweeps for weeks, and you've ignored them, and lo and behold, you got sued, and the judge ruled exactly how everybody knew the judge was gonna rule. So, you know, maybe learn from your mistakes and stop doing this in the first place so that they don't have, the judge doesn't have to keep ruling against you and reminding you, hey, stop doing this bullshit. I'd last, just like to leave y'all with just a short quote from the Bible, not for religious reasons, but just because I think it helps lay out a decent moral foundation. Then he will say to those on his left, depart from me, you who are cursed, into the eternal fire, prepared for the devil and his angels, for I was hungry and you gave me nothing to eat. I was thirsty and you gave me nothing to drink.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Richard Wake. I have four more speakers.
Yeah, Richard Wake, City Council, District 7. You know, I was gonna talk about the district attorney being involved in the homeless issue, but after hearing the shameful comments of trustees Michael Baker and Rebecca Sandoval from the Twin Rivers School District, I'm gonna talk about that. You know, you guys really ought to be ashamed of yourselves going after the Joshua House. These are people that are dying of cancer, and here you are aiming false, false claims and worries about, you know, drugs being used in the facility, when people are going, gonna be in and out. And then trustee Sandoval said something about, you know, NIMBYism as it doesn't apply to them. Well, Twin Rivers School Districts are the, are the NIMBYs here, not any of us. They were implying that we're NIMBYs wrong. You know, before the pandemic, I actually spoke to trustee Christine Jefferson about the Twin Rivers Police Department overstepping their boundaries and assisting park rangers to roust out encampments that had nothing, not even remotely close to any of the schools at all. They were being used to do that. Nothing was done about that. You know, all this false hand-wringing and, you know, you know, false pretenses about Joshua House just really is shameful. I would urge Councilwoman Talamontes not to get involved in that. Joshua House needs to open. We're talking about people that are dying from cancer? My gosh, let's let people die with dignity. This is only a ploy by trustees Baker and Sandoval to get themselves re-elected and worry about their own position in the Twin Rivers School Board rather than caring about unhoused people dying of cancer. You guys should really, really, really be ashamed of yourselves.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Alexander S.
Alexander S., please.
Alexander, if you'll unmute.
Yes, thank you. I did want to comment on the earlier Jesus quote. Man, Jesus said, does not live by bread alone, but by every word which proceeds out of the mouth of God. So, yes, people need physical stuff, but what more than that, the two greatest things anyone could give to anyone else are truth and a good example. All the money, food, housing on this earth are not going to help humans who will not exert themselves to do the right thing. I wasn't able to comment on the general plan, but wanted to say, all of this focus on diversity, inclusion, and diversity is a waste of time and money, as there is zero evidence of systemic racism in Sacramento, California, or America. I would also encourage the city council to imitate the councils about 20 years earlier and start going back to three minutes and five minutes, too, because we need more time to be stating what the problems are, and we need that time to be uninterrupted. Also, I would encourage the council to go to comments at the beginning of the meeting, not at the end. It's extremely cruel to force all of us to stay up all the way until the end of the meeting, when many of us have jobs that we have to go to early in the morning, 3, 4 in the morning, staying up till 9, 10, 11 o'clock at night is really not feasible for that. And you work for us, we don't work for you. Every agenda item is allowed in public comment, so too many times, you have these agenda items that we cannot comment on. We deserve the right to comment on every single agenda item, not grouping all of them together and letting us comment on one out of 20. We ought to comment on every single one of them. These, this interruption of the speakers needs to stop. These NGOs and community organizers, we need to focus on who is paying these people. They are not up there of their own goodwill. They're being paid to do something, and there is a reason for that, and it is not in the best interest of Sacramento or the citizens. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is PJ. I have two more speakers. PJ?
Yeah, no one's paying us. Nice try, though. Just to clarify, the future isn't EV. The future is density. The future is affordability. The future is robust transit. EVs are inherently classless, and they do nothing to affect the traffic and sprawl problems. They do nothing to address walkability. They do nothing to improve our lived environment. Regarding the sweep at W and Alhambra, sweeps kill. Sweeps were put to a halt through a judge because Howard's bad decision-making would subject those most ignored among us to harm in this ridiculous climate change-driven heat, wasting more money through sweeps that harm our most marginalized members of our communities. This is not empathy. This is not community. This is not a solution. This is psychosis, throwing good money after bad and wasting it in pursuit of harm for those in our community most at risk of harm. This long-term recampment has a long history of violent evictions predicated on promises that we now know were already broken, with no follow-up to those households who are ever, over and over again, never offered the real housing solutions to their crisis. Residents living across Sacramento deserve better from our city government, an end to violent displacement and investment in long-term solutions. We oppose the city's current responsive eviction threats, lack of viable services offered, as well as any escalations of harassment or enforcement resulting in violent sweeps that may be planned for the future. There is no shelter. Sweeps are illegal and unconstitutional. They need to stop. They don't even conform to measure, oh, offers of shelter are not forthcoming. Offers amount to nothing to replace the shelter that is lost in sweeps. Stop the harm. Stop wasting money by sending out cops who make hundreds of thousands of dollars to watch minimum wage workers destroy the shelters of those with little to nothing. Oh, and for those bitching about Joshua's house, that's a freaking hospice facility. Like, you're in a house. You're not harmed. You're not marginalized. It's gross that even at the end of these people's lives, you want to harm them. That's disgusting. Anyways, yeah, none of us are getting paid, by the way. I mean, no one would put up with this crap for any amount of money. It would have to be a ridiculous amount of money, and no one does that, because we actually care about our community, because that's how communities work. It's a kind of cool idea.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is AJ.
Hello, can you hear me?
You can.
Okay. So I, hello, City Council, I'm calling in from District 6. It's been a while since I've been here at the city council level. I'm just trying to catch up. I've honestly lost track of the number of sweeps that we try to organize for. You know, my heart is racing a little bit, partially because I'm nervous, but also partially because it's exhausting. It truly is exhausting. So let me just offer you my perspective from someone who maybe isn't an expert in these processes. I'm really confused about the part where it seems that there are these orders to stop sweeping folks, right, from various levels of government, and I understand we're at a city level of government space. We have these orders from judges, we have a recent order that people have mentioned earlier, and a temporary restraining order that prohibits the city from sweeping under these harsh weather conditions with nowhere for them to go. We're also dealing with complications of climate change, and we're really just trying to advocate for the humanity and care of our unhoused neighbors. It doesn't make sense to me. I'm not sure how I'm expected to engage when I see a lack of follow-through with orders from what I understand as the top down, saying sweeps should stop, sweeps should be paused, but then they're continuing. I'm not sure if loopholes are being found. I'm not sure how to make it make sense, to be honest, and I'm not sure what options I really have left as a constituent to actually try to engage with you, to ask that we honor humanity for our unhoused neighbors. I'm exhausted, but I'm gonna keep going, and I really, really hope that we stop.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you to our council and to the community who participated today. That concludes our business for tonight. We do have one adjourned in memory, Madam Clerk and members of the council. I'd like to adjourn today's meeting on behalf of Agustin Martin Ledezma. Those in the community, in the Sacramento community, knew him as Augie. Augie passed away on Tuesday, June 27, 2023, after two years of battle with lung cancer. I got a chance to talk to Augie as I was knocking on his door and talking about local elections and local issues. Augie was a fighter and a community member. He was born in January 28, 1940, in Madera, California, as a migrant farm worker, and he and his mother and his six other siblings all worked in the fields on days like this weekend, where it was 100 degrees. His mother passed away, and he became a foster kid, you know, at a very young age. And it was St. Patrick's Home for Children here in Sacramento that helped him get a start here. You know, Augie became a dad, he and was, you know, for many of us, we know one of his sons, our colleague, former council member, council member Chris Ledezma. And he was an impressive role model. You know, most of us don't know that he actually started by getting a job in, on Franklin Boulevard. He started working at, as in doing some auto body work, and then found a love for it and opened it and opened up L. and A. Body Shop in, on Franklin Boulevard. And in fact, for some of us, when we do Back to the Boulevard, he was involved in a lot of the classic cars and all of the excitement that we cherish today. You know, Augie also cared about kids and young kids. And, and because of it, even though it was long days, you know, doing, running his own business, being active in the community, he decided to coach. And he was a coach, you know, for the South Sacramento Jets. He made sure that he was supporting kids through basket, through baseball. That was his love and his passion was finding how to support young kids through, through baseball. You know, and him and his wife, understanding how some children, some kids, didn't have a choice on, on what would happen in their life and would find themselves as foster children. So they co-founded a, an annual golf tournament to benefit a charity and to help support foster kids find their way. He was very humble about his experience. He never talked about his adversity. He worked hard and was a very selfless person and a, a patriarch to his family and his community. And so tonight, we're adjourning on behalf of grandfather, a father, a coach, a local business owner, and an advocate for foster youth, Agustin Martin Ledezma, to us, Augie Ledezma, council. With that, we're adjourned at 8:15 PM.